Oh, meeting order. Can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'll apologize ahead of time. I don't have a lot of voice, so I'll do the best I can. Hopefully, if you can't hear me, I'll repeat my song. I need a motion to accept the meeting minutes.
Second.
Mike?
Second.
Jessica?
Jean?
Aye.
Linda?
Aye.
Jessica?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
I need a motion to adopt this evening's agenda.
So moved.
Linda?
Second.
Mike?
Jean?
Aye.
Linda?
Aye.
Jessica?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Joe?
Okay, moving to the consent agenda items. Item three point three, I need a motion.
So moved.
What?
Second.
Jessica?
Jean?
Aye.
Linda?
Aye.
Jessica?
Aye.
Mike?
Yes.
Joe?
Aye.
I need a motion to accept item three point four.
So moved.
Linda?
Second.
Jessica?
Jean?
Aye.
Linda?
Aye.
Jessica?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Finally approved CPSC and CSE items on three point five.
So moved.
Mike?
Second.
Linda?
Jean?
Aye.
Linda?
Aye.
Jessica?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Okay, moving on to, I don't know if we have any committee reports to do.
Yeah, I have one. The Legislative Committee met this past Thursday night and with all the other board members that are representative from the room in Tegu County. And we're going to have our graphics with the legislative representatives from our, from Tegu County as well as Brum County on February twenty-third at seven forty-five in the morning. And you're welcome to attend. And what we were asked is to solicit questions from the board members, from our community. Any questions that you might have for legislators? And in this case, it would be Representative Chris Friend as well as Representative Senator Omer. So if you have any questions, you're welcome to email me or email one of the board members and make sure the questions get to me as soon as possible. And I'll pass it on to the committee. And those questions will be forwarded to the legislators so they have time to prepare answers to those questions for the graphics that morning. And it will be at Brum Tavabose's at Leicester since Education Center in the morning. So there'll be more information for the rest of the board members and invitation will go out from Bosse's. And I'll make sure you get the details, okay?
Linda, was there any discussion about the pilot? I know the governor vetoed it, but as far as sending it back?
What they discussed was that they asked the board members that were there what their initiatives would be. And so they were asking us to identify priorities. And I raised my hand and said, we're still very interested in that discussion on pilot. But that's included underneath finances. So you will see as a legislative priority for us in our district, in our county. The pilots are still very important, the discussion of how to revamp that as well as the formula, the tax cap formula. I know that the superintendent's council as well has that a priority. So yes, it was.
I think when Cynthia, I don't want to steal Cynthia's thunder, but when she does her presentation, Oego, Appalachican, has an inordinate amount of pilots for a district our size. And without going into a lot of history, I get on my soapbox, soapbox with Denopoly, but our controller made that part of the tax cap formula. And you'll see in Cynthia's presentation that in out years, it has a significant impact on our tax life. I'm going to let Cynthia just explain it to you because she can do a better job than me. Anyway, but that's good to know.
Regarding the Policy Committee, we're still awaiting NISMUS compliance review. And at that point, we're going to have a lot of work to do, I think, because it's been a long time since, since that's been done.
I don't have a president's report other than to say at the next meeting, the board will be discussing and going on the gender queer book in the library. Just going to say that for now and move on. Do you have anything else?
No, that's it.
So I'll pass it on to you.
Well, thank you. First, I want to thank Mrs. Gibson and the staff, Sandra, who was here tonight to set everything up and invite students in to present some of the great work that they're doing. Obviously, it was nice to recognize some of our staff members who don't always necessarily are at the forefront of things. And there's the behind the scenes folks that make the building clean, make sure that our kids have food every day, breakfast, lunch, you know, the cleaning. So it's really, those are really, really important roles. It was nice that we could, we could recognize them tonight. I'm not going to talk too much about the governor's initial proposal. I don't know, Cynthia, if you're going to plan to touch on that much at all, tiny bit. We know that it's really early in the process. The initial proposal does not look great for school, for most school districts across the state. But we'll see how this all plays out. And you'll have the politics and when the legislators get involved, this, obviously, this is an election year, I believe, for legislators. So I think she's, she's, she's put the ball in their court right now to see where things are going to go. But right now, we were, we were promised two years of full foundation aid. We've gotten last year's, this year's appears to not be at that limit. But we'll see how that plays out in the end. So there's a lot of discussion, a lot of advocacy that has taken place. You know, last, at the end of the week, I'm on the council of the School Superintendent's Executive Committee. We meet with the state ed representatives and, and talk to different budget folks from, for advocacy standpoint. And it's just, it's early, right? It's, it's early. So we're not, not necessarily pressing the panic button, but we're also, you know, we're, we're optimistic, but cautiously awaiting to see how this plays out. There were a couple of things also that came out of my meeting last week. There's a lot of work being done on teacher certification. It's been a really difficult process in New York, whether it be administration certification, teacher certification. We know we have shortages in particular areas with special ed, some, some different science areas and things of that nature. So there's, there's certain, certain areas where it's a struggle to, you know, to have a, a large pool of candidates. So they're working on some creative ideas to try to streamline, you know, some of the certifications. So there's some micro-prudentialing that they're talking about. There's some avenues for TAs to get, to become certified teachers, a little bit, a little bit easier process. So they're, they are looking at it. They are working at it. It's been an issue, I think, for, for a while now. And I don't, I think that unless we start to do some things, it's, it's going to continue to be challenging. They talked a bit about, we talked a bit about the Blue Ribbon Commission. There's going to be a presentation in March, April, again, to the Board of Regents. So that's still looking in that direction. I think timeline is still a little bit up in the air in terms of how that's all going to roll out. You'll, you'll also note too, I believe, that in the highlights of the governor's executive proposal where she has noted a mandate for the science of reading. This is, this is her, this is her baby, I guess you would say. So we, we are aware of this. I think the state ed standpoint is, they don't like necessarily be in the business from, from the governor's office of mandating curriculum. However, it appears that this is the direction that things are going. So we have already begun to pilot some of those pieces to the science of reading. So we're, we're out in front of that. Tomorrow starts our January Regents Exams. We got our fingers crossed, Mr. Schofield, that it rains instead of snows and sleet. So we don't have to disrupt the schedule, but we'll see how that, that plays out in the next ten to twelve hours here. And we've got some presentations tonight. I believe first up, we have our AES Building Spotlight. And I believe, are you guys ready to go? Okay. So Mrs. Silvestri's filling in for, for Mr. Beatty tonight. Mrs. Andrews and Mrs. Neller are both here. They are both instructional coaches here at Appalachican Elementary School.
Fifteen eights, one and a half TAs, seven student workers, and a hundred and eighty-five kids who attend after-school care here. We've talked about this a little bit earlier. We honored these folks. Yep, nope, that's mine. And we had a great student team presentation from all of this, from the four students up top who all probably could be teachers. And so then here is the data part that Mr. Beatty asked me to share with you. So the blue is OA data and the yellow is the state data. So in all grade levels, we are above the state in ELA and pretty significantly above in fifth grade. And then same goes for math, quite a bit higher in math than the state. So we wanted to share that. We're very proud of that data. And this is district-wide, not just AES. That's all we got. Perfect. That's the data. But I am going to turn it over to the, our instructional coaches, Sarah Neller and Emirra Andrews. I'm going to take you on.
Oh, good. Good. I don't have it. I mean, I have it. Ready to go.
Better.
I guess I'll start while she's getting that ready. Emirra Andrews, Sarah Neller, we're both instructional coaches here at AES. We wanted to take a few minutes just to showcase the positivity that we're seeing with coaching here at AES. And just the impact that we see with both students and teachers going through the process.
So student-centered coaching is a new model for us this year and what we've done in previous years. And what's been really great about student-centered coaching is that it's initiated by the teacher, either as an individual or with their grade level team. And they come to us with a goal in mind that they have for their students. And we work with them to create learning targets toward that goal, to reassess the students, to plan with them for instruction, to instruct with them, to assess, to intervene, all to get students moving towards their goal.
So as you can see, at the twenty-week part or point in the year, we have, more than half of our instructional teachers have participated in a coaching cycle. And we're anticipating at the thirty-week, we'll be a little shy of three-fourths of our instructional teachers. I think the biggest takeaway for us is when we began this process in September, we had individual teachers signing up. Now we have those teachers coming back, but they're signing up as a whole grade level. So the entire team is participating in seminars. So what we wanted to do was be able to let the teachers who have worked in coaching cycles be able to tell you their thoughts and their feedback about how instructional coaching has been going at AES.
To receive support, brainstorming ideas to increase engagement and production.
Push myself and provide more opportunities for the students.
Grow my instruction, but also to help my students in a place where I saw them consistently struggling.
Give me somebody to work with, to bounce ideas off of, to reflect on the time with, and also to get feedback from.
We can collaborate and bounce ideas off each other and see what was positive and what was working. When teachers work together, collaborate, and push each other, we give better student outcomes.
To help my kids grow in their writing, specifically with elaboration and their production.
My experience working with instructional coach was extremely positive and beneficial to student growth. We were able to analyze student data together and teach responsibly based on specific behaviors and skills the students were showing. We reflected each day on our instruction and planned whole class, small group, and individual conferences the next day. My students loved having an instructional coach come in for writing, and I felt it was beneficial for them to see and learn from another teacher.
The coach really listened to my concerns. Before we started with chorus, we met. They really wanted to know, like, what was it that I needed help with? They always work with me to create a plan that I can implement. So we always make sure that it's something that's very doable in the time that I have. After we have a chorus rehearsal, the coach will meet with me and we will reflect on how it went. So I just always feel really supportive. It was probably the strongest level of support a teacher could have. But also really challenging to, to reflect on your own practice each day. But having a coach in-house that is here on a daily basis was a really positive and strong experience.
It worked well. I thought the kids grew. It's good to see someone come into incoming kindergarten and see where they're starting and see where they need to go and help close those gaps. And that really helped working with a coach.
Two brains are better than one. So I think that having someone else, you know, to bounce ideas back and forth with is so beneficial.
Engaging and cooperative teaching helped me learn different strategies for meeting specific needs and allowed me to be more self-reflective of my instruction.
The coach really opened my eyes to new ways to engage, instruct, and even assess my students. And it's really been quite transformative in my teaching across subject areas.
Seeing what the kids first saw were adults that were collaborating together. That is a really powerful thing for students to see. The teachers in the building are working together to make each other better.
It helped us meet the needs of all of our students. And it was amazing to see at the end how much our kids grew in writing the student.
After weeks of coaching, we saw students that could explain why they were doing what they were doing, that were drawing strong models, that showed a deep understanding of the math.
They really learned to work as a team, but they have something specific they can work on every time they come. So I really feel like it's helped them take ownership. I've seen a lot of progress. And I think as we continue to work, there will be even more.
Our data showed major growth in production. My students went from writing a few sentences to several pages during writing workshop. They gained confidence and saw themselves as writers. Writing workshop became their favorite time of the day.
They grew leaps and bounds in the unit of study, but they've also grown leaps and bounds since then. And I think that's because they were provided a springboard throughout that coaching cycle, which has now just vaulted them into further levels of growth that were just previously unseen.
So we've been really excited to be able to share the opportunity of the work that we're doing here in our building and the enthusiasm our teachers have had for it. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Very good. Any questions? Excellent. Nice job.
Mrs. Sylvester, great job. Pinch hitting there from the student. Always easy. See, so next we have Mrs. Williams, who's here with us tonight from the music department. And she is going to talk a little bit about the All States competition.
Marcy taking over. Are you playing? Oh, hang on. Oh, I can. I just didn't have that. Or you want to drive the boat?
We'll get you.
Yes, I got to find you. Hi, I'm Lindsay Williams. And this is, this is Carol Lane. Hello. So the, the rest of MTV, who went, that was the group that went to Allstate this year, they, a lot of them are busy. On stage musical care is behind the scenes. And, you know, we're in the pit, so we were able to come tonight to talk to you a little bit about the fact that MTV was selected to present at the Allstate Convention. Usually we have like one or two individuals who have really done well on their NISMUS solos and have been selected to go. This year we had a different experience. Our whole MTV group was selected to go and perform at the Allstate Convention in Rochester in December. And myself and the students presented about the group to a room like this, full of music educators, about how they could start this similar program in their schools. Did you find it, Marcy?
I found it. I didn't have it attached.
It was really cool to see. So of course, the students got to perform some of their favorite things. We talked about copyright cleared music and how they can get started, how the teachers can get started. But they also got to talk to the teachers about why they've done it and what they've learned. And my favorite part was when the students got to say, now, teachers, this is the objective for you to learn today. That was, that was the best part. So this presentation is actually what we had presented. We're not going to, it took us an hour, so we're going to, we're going to, five minutes here. Okay, yeah. So this is them doing their thing at the Allstate Convention. And then have a, a video because they don't usually allow, allow that at the, you could go to the next slide, Marcy. So, right, so this is us. And we also presented, you can go to the next slide, with a colleague of ours from Windsor, who is doing the same thing, a similar thing out there with what a lot of people are calling modern band. Yep. And we, of course, had to tip our hats to Mr. Fabreius, who started MTV back in two thousand and seven. Yep, you can keep going. This is perfect timing. Just keep going.
Don't mind me, Lindsay. I'm just trying to get rid of this.
Oh, no, that's fine. Oh, well, now, now, now I'm behind my slides. But basically, okay, there we go. Was, we, we kind of shared our story in hopes that people could, could find something that they would use as well. Yeah, can you back it up?
Sure.
Okay.
This one?
I think so. What's the one before it? Right, yeah, this is where the students told them what the objective was.
Okay.
Yeah, and so then each student took one of these bullets and presented about why they did it and, and what they learned and how we got started. And how we linked to some of our traditional ensembles like concert band and concert chorus and jazz band and chamber singers. Now we took that experience the students had and, and connected it and took it to the, into the modern world, but we kind of connected it. There was a lot of connection, which we were trying to show to educators across the state that these programs support each other. So speaking of that, Carol, did you want to talk a little bit about, Carol's been in the group for three years and she's a senior. And so she's gone to the rehearsals and then gone to Allstate. So can you tell everybody about your experience a little bit?
So MTV was really fun. It was always like the older kids that got to be in it. And it was always something that all the students looked up to. And so I got to be in it from an early age, which was really nice. And so we worked super hard. We would practice every morning at seven forty-five before, not even seven, six forty-five, before school for two hours. And then we got selected to go to Allstate, which is a really big deal. Like Allstate for individuals, you have to get a perfect score on NISMUS. So the equivalent is basically impossible to get there. And so when we got there, we were in a room full of like these really professional people, and they were all music educators. And we got to tell them how we did it, which is really crazy because normally they're telling us what to do. And we got to show them how we got this far. And we were kind of like the standard that they had to learn how to do. And it was really cool. It was a great experience.
Yeah, so you can go. So we shared stories of how Chris Gilbert does this at Windsor and how we do it here in Oego. And talking about our community outreach and providing real-life gigs for students to kind of see themselves in the future outside of the classroom and their own lives, making music in their communities was a big focus of the presentation. Excellent there. Yeah. Oh, I think these are all bulleted. So just like smack that thing like ten times. There they are. Yeah. So we just talked about, you know, tipping my hat, of course, to Mr. Hall, who works our sound, and Miss Wood, who helps us with our dancing and all that stuff. We talked about how we get a lot of our funding through Bosse's and how that's been really wonderful for us. And we've had a lot of opportunities that way. And we've talked about how to share between other programs. We got, you know, how to get started, basically. We also talked, yeah, you can just keep on playing. We talked, so warm-ups, right? These are some basic things, but we, we took some warm-ups that the students knew from chorus or from band. And we kind of, you know, merged them together and put them with a drum set. And we hope, we hoped we shared some fun ways to take some old tried and true ways of helping students become better singers and performers and, you know, give it a new spin. So I think our educators really appreciated that. We, so one of our students, Kai Klett, wrote a song, which we performed there. So this is one of those, so copyright cleared music, when you're dealing with artists who are performing right now, is, is tricky. So one of the ways that is a great way to do it is to have your students write their own, copyright cleared. So that was great. And I think that was really well received. Everybody really liked that. And we're hoping to continue our work with that student composition by recording it with Mr. Service and his music production classes. And hopefully submitting that for some other NISMUS things for next year. Yeah, you can keep, but there's a whole bunch of bullets on here, too. So these are things they learn from our traditional theory classes or band or chorus, but they had to implement all these things to write the song and perform it together. Yeah, I think there's some more there, too. So, oh, yeah, there they are. Yeah, it took an hour. So this, this is the click notes version. So really an implementation of all those things that they would have learned in those classes. Another cool thing that we did is we took pieces that were originally written for chorus or for jazz band, and we kind of arranged them for a modern band. And one of the pieces that we performed there was written by our own Mr. Jeremy Corcoran, of his arrangement of Saturday in the Park, which was a real top buster. So that was really fun for everybody to perform. I think that was a highlight as well. So, yeah. This is the Jeremy Corcoran slide. Yeah, Mr. Corcoran? Which is really cool that we have other teachers in our department. We're, we're going to be performing some things by Mr. Staples at our upcoming jazz concerts. We have, just all of our teachers are just so talented, whether they're here tonight or not. It's nice when you get to go to Allstate with seniors, but I definitely want to just give all my gratitude to our elementary teachers and our middle school teachers, both band, chorus, general music. They're just doing such a great job of preparing these students to be able to have an experience like this. So this is just the tip of the iceberg. So, yeah, and we linked it back to NISMUS, saying like all those things that we've been teaching students that are tried and true, we're still teaching those in the new modern repertoire. Whether we're playing Mozart or Taylor Swift, we can talk about these things. So, and they're good things to keep talking about. Yeah. And that's it. Yeah, pretty much, these are just, just pictures of us in our, in our element. And that's just what we left the teacher saying, like, hey, you can do it. And, you know, go do it. Don't take our word for it. Give it a try. There they are. That's the band from last year. It's hard to get a good picture of these people, you know? Did you want to add anything to here?
Just thank you guys so much for being able to support us in what we do. It's given us so many amazing opportunities. And I'm so excited that the young And I'm so excited that the younger kids are going to keep getting more and more.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Mrs. Williams does an incredible job leading our music department. This, this is just a small glimpse of it, but if you've ever been to any of our, our concerts or shows and the things that they're, they're doing with kids is, is pretty incredible. I'm probably a little biased, but I think we're one, have one of the best music programs in the state, so. Great job. That's all of them. They really do a phenomenal job. Up next, we have Steve, correct me if I'm wrong, Palanaski? Palanaski? Did I get it right?
You did.
Okay. Steve's here. He's with Tyoka County Real Property and going to talk about exemption status.
Yeah, after all that cool stuff, I, boy, this is kind of going to be a little bit of a downer. There's a lot of, just kind of like info here. But just a quick background, so you understand, I, I graduated from OFA back in, hmm hmm hmm. And man, I wish we'd had that. I mean, we had a, we had a good, good music program back then with Lou Pepstra and Gloria Savinsky and had a lot of fun, but, boy, I wish I could have done that. And by the way, I know from the Marine Corps, we did a lot of that kind of stuff, too. So, so if your students are looking for a gig moving on, just call a recruiter. I'm also a TIC college graduate and I was twenty-two years a musician in the Marine Corps. And now I'm back in good old Ugo, been with the county for about seven years. What I'm here to talk about, I'm the Tyoka County Director of Real Property Tax Services. And I'm here to talk about a few things with exemptions, property tax exemptions. The first, first exemption is the new volunteer firefighters and ambulance workers exemption. Prior to last year, there were different exemptions for different areas around the state. And the legislature passed this exemption, exemption to consolidate it. And, and so it's statewide, this is available. It is for, the intention is recognizing sacrifices of firefighters and ambulance workers, people right here in our community. Hopefully it'll help some in recruiting a new tension. If granted, property owner receives a ten percent reduction on their assessment for competing property taxes, specifically for whoever passes the exemption. For example, the county passed it in August. So, so he's qualified and they sign up for the exemption with their assessor, they would get that reduction on their county taxes. So far, it's county, couple fire districts, a lot of conversation with towns, a lot of conversation not, beginning with school districts. I was just up a canter. Members must have at least two years of service. The fire chief sends us a certified list. Property has to be primary residence. If it's a multiple use, they apportion it and they get it just on the residential portion. Individuals, once they have twenty years or more of service and at least the county will grant, will grandfather in this as well, then they get a lifetime exemption. Unremarried surviving spouses of lifetime exemption and members who are killed in the line of duty, they receive a lifetime as well. There, there's some other administrative details. If it's something that, you know, the board wants to, you know, have more discussion about, you know, I've got, I'll send Marcy some more stuff, so, you know, can kind of read through it. Just kind of giving you the overall today. The, the other exemption I'm, I'd like to talk about is a senior exemption. And there's two points for the senior exemption. The first is that the state, the legislature has simplified the way they calculate income. It's an income-based exemption for our seniors. It was a more complicated, they simplified it. I'm just going to go through this real quickly. It starts with adjusted gross income from your, from an individual's tax returns. Those people that don't file, seniors that don't file, there's a worksheet that the state's provided the assessor has. Start with adjusted gross income. There's five adjustments, three of which the taxing jurisdiction can choose to change. The first, taxable IRA distributions are deducted from gross income. Local option, you can choose not to deduct. Number two, social security benefits not included in adjusted gross income are added. Local option, can choose not to add that. The third, medical prescription drug expenses not covered by insurance are deducted. That was part of the old calculation, so pretty much everybody's, I'm sure is probably going to just keep it the way it was. Most people, I think, they had that as a deduction. The last two, these, there's no local option to change it. Tax exempt interest and dividends are added. So if you've got Roths and things like that and you've, you know, done a lot of good planning, you have to add that to your exemption or to your adjusted gross income for, for calculating your income. The last is loss limitations. For folks that are filing like as business owners, you're restricted no more than $3,000 for any category of loss total, not more than $15,000. So you can't say, "I had $80,000 in losses, so that my income is down here." And I think those last two, you know, this, this exemption really is for, you know, fixed income, low income seniors. You know, that's the whole point. And not to say that these, those last two were people, they weren't really gaming it. It was just the way it was set up. They were able to take advantage of that and now, you know, so it's just for the, for, for, you know, seniors that could really need some help. The second point on the, the exemption is it's based on, it's calculated based on a scale. So you have your, the base of your scale. And anybody who makes below that much gets a fifty percent exemption. And then for the next thousand dollars of income, it goes forty-five percent and then forty. And, and then the scale goes up. There's a couple different ways it can be set up. You can go up to twenty percent, you can go all the way to five percent. So, Tyoka County scales, as best I know, have been the same for the county, the towns, the school districts for at least ten years. The state had set the maximum base amount at $29,000 a long time ago. They just raised it to $50,000. Now, there's counties out there and other places, they're, they're making big adjustments to this. And that's not what I'm advocating for, but it's something that I think at the county, we're going to be taking a look at it and, and see if we can do some analysis and seeing if we can maybe shift our scale up a little bit. But again, talking about, you know, the levy and tax rates and everything like that, you don't want to take a big, do major changes because it wreaks havoc on your tax rate. So that's something that, again, if the board is looking to maybe take a, take a closer look at that, that I'm hoping to be able to, you know, put on a statistician hat and, and try, you know, get some ideas of what kind of impact, so we can, you know, make judicious adjustments. Because what we have a like in is a dollar different than the county scale right now, the basis of scales. So, the districts have fifteen thousand, county's at fourteen thousand nine hundred ninety-nine. So, there's places, there's towns and districts that are lower, there's some that are higher. Again, that's just something that going forward, if the board's like, is interested in having more discussion about that, then we'll, we'll crunch some numbers and see if we can come up with, you know, something, again, that makes sense. So, that's all I got. I know that was pretty exciting, so. I'm asleep, I can't. Oh, and I'd also like to mention, I am the father of a special needs student right here at AES. Mrs. Morgan is amazing. So is everybody else at this school. So we are so tickled with the folks over here. She is a challenge and they do a wonderful job with her. Any questions?
Thanks, Steve.
And that's it?
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have two presentations left. We have Cynthia Lomble, who is from CBO with room Tyoka Bozies. And she's going to talk, as she has for a couple of years now, about our long-range plan, what that looks like.
All right, thank you for having me tonight. Tonight I'm going to be reviewing, we've done this as the superintendent mentioned for several years now. I'm going to start with the projected performance for this school year. Then we'll talk about a five-year long-range plan. We'll also talk a little bit about the executive proposal and the changes proposed for foundation aid. Then I will talk about the tax levy and its components, especially the pilots and those implications as that you have, that's a very serious concern for your district. And then finally, I'm going to end with a little bit on investments. So I'll start with the projected performance. The central business office, one of the services that we do provide is to project what we think is going to happen for you fiscally during the year. And we meet with the district administration on that every month, starting from October to, to June. So, our most recent projection is that we would project you to have an operating profit this year of about $1.8 million. This is going to change. So, come June, it's not going to be $1.8 million. It could be close to that or it could be a little higher or a little bit lower. One of the variables that's, that changes more for your district is health insurance as you are a self-insured health insurance plan. I work with multiple districts in the region that does have a self-insured or a claims-based health insurance plan. And I know from years of experience that the trend for health insurance can change drastically from the fall to the spring. So, we try to, to do our best to estimate what it would be right now. But I have seen that change throughout the second half of the school year. So that could definitely impact this projected profit. If you go to the next slide, I'll talk about some of the reasons why we're seeing that this year. Frankly, a lot of this is on the revenue side. So there is additional revenue that was not budgeted. For one thing, the district has, has opened up its doors to educate special education students to other, from other districts in the region. We have a severe shortage of placements available across the entire region for special education. And so districts are finding ways to help educate each other's students. And so Ugo has done this and I know many districts are grateful for that. And as a result, of course, you're going to build those districts. So that did provide additional tuition revenue. Also, interest rates are really at a pretty phenomenal rate right now. We're earning over five percent on T-bills and I'll talk a little bit more about that later. But a couple of years ago, we were earning next to nothing for interest. And so we have this unprecedented interest. We're expecting $525,000, somewhere in that range, for interest earnings on your general fund. So that doesn't include cafeteria capital, debt service or scholarships. So that would just be on your general fund and those reserves. So, we wouldn't typically necessarily budget for all that. We can't budget for the portion that goes into the reserves, that has to go back into the reserves. The interest is being generated by the cash in the reserves. But even the operating portion of it that we receive interest on, we know it's going to go away eventually. So it's hard to build into your budget a short-term revenue source. Obviously, in a time of financial crisis, you're going to use whatever resources you have. But we have not budgeted for interest earnings because of the volatility in that line. So that is generating over half a million dollars of bad surplus this year. Also, you've entered into a new agreement with Bozies for rental. And you also received a one-time shared services grant this year related to your prescription drug program. You've worked for the past several years to, to receive this and it has finally came in this year and it is $378,000. So that was another source of one-time revenue this school year. On the expenditure side, I talked about health insurance. Right now, we're projecting some health insurance savings and that's helping you. Again, that trend could change in the second half of the school year. And then finally, we're also seeing savings in special education. I can't speak to whether this is because you can't place the students that need to be placed or you're seeing true savings. I've said for the entire region, if we ever were able to have all of the placements that we need in this region for special education, then we would have much higher costs. I've said this over and over to, to districts. This is one of the reasons for the Bozies project, obviously, is to create more space for additional placements. And, and so I, I know that this is a challenge in the region, so that there is some savings this year from special education. That could obviously change if you have students move into the district that have high needs at any point in time. So when we take a look at what this will, what will happen to essentially your savings for the general fund at the end of the year, we're taking a look at the status of your total fund balance. And it's, it's in several categories. And I just want to run through those categories for you. So, the savings that you have would be increased by that $1.8 million. So your total fund balance would increase by $1.8 million. And it would be put into several different categories. Your non-spendable fund balance is money that we have to set aside to excel us for your health insurance program. We had had to pay them a cash advance to have cash on hand to pay your bills. So that is money that's set aside and it's essentially non-spendable. We put it there. Your restricted reserves, this is where all of your reserves are, with the exception of the tax reduction reserve. Think of your capital reserve. This is where the capital reserve is. I'll talk about this on the next slide. We would put some of that surplus into the reserves this year. And then your appropriated fund balance is the budget that you set, portion of your savings that you set aside to support the budget for the next year. We are showing a decrease in this. This was related to a one-time capital project that you put into your budget for '23, '24. I think that this line could possibly change as we develop the '24, '25 budget. But for right now, we're showing a decrease of $150,000. For encumbrances, these are purchase orders that were made last year. And they just simply, the items didn't come in by the end of the school year. And so we weren't able to pay for them in the '23, '20, excuse me, '22, '23 school year. So every year you have, you know, you make purchase orders in June, purchases in June. Stuff doesn't come in quite by June 30th, so we have to pay for it in the next school year. So there are carryover encumbrances. It's how they're booked. We don't project any at the time we do these projections because we would double count them. So we always project them at zero, but you will have some at the end of the year. And then finally, unassigned fund balance. So this is the category of fund balance that is unrestricted, unassigned. And this is, they talk about the four percent limitation of fund balance. This is that category. So you do have approximately $2.2 million in your unassigned fund balance. By statute, by law, you can only have up to four percent of the next year's budget in that. It's been something that we've been struggling with and advocacy with the governor and the state to change. Other areas of government are allowed much higher amounts in unassigned fund balance. And we have, we've argued for this to be ten percent, eight percent. And so far, it has never made it into the budget or law. So it's, it's gotten shot down numerous times. So we would keep this relatively the same. Just one quick note, you did have a tax reduction reserve regarding the sale of a building. We did use that in this last budget cycle. You took action on that, I think in September. It was like a whole $10,000 in that reserve. So that reserve, we have zeroed out now. And you would not have that moving forward because we did use that to help reduce taxes this past year. So just talking about your reserves, what funds do you have available to support you in the future? You have multiple reserves. Let me just walk you through them. You have a workman's compensation reserve, which would support workman's compensation costs. You have unemployment insurance, which would, where you support unemployment costs. Then there's two pension-related reserves. There's one that supports the cost of ERS, which is the retirement contribution reserve. There's one that supports the cost of TRS and that is for the teacher retirement system. You have an employee benefit accrue liability reserve, which would pay for time earned upon separation. So if you have an employee who leaves and is owed vacation payout or a sick payout of some sort based on days earned, you could use this reserve to help support that cost. You also have two other reserves, the capital reserve, which we've all heard about. And that supports capital projects voted on by the voters in the future. And then the insurance reserve, which the district established when you went to be a self-insured for health insurance. So this supports the cost of health insurance. So if you do have a year where you have significant claims that you have some spike, you would be able to tap into this reserve to help support those costs. So when you see the reserves increasing, this background. When you see the reserves increasing by $2 million, what we're showing is really the interest earnings in all of these reserves. Plus, we would be putting $155,000 into the TRS reserve to support TRS costs in the future. That's the maximum that we can put into that reserve by law. And then that would be fully funded through the end of this year. And we also would put $160,000 into the insurance reserve. This is the amount that as the projection changes, this changes. And then finally, we, we have here on paper just showing about a million and a half going into the capital reserve. And I, I believe that there's discussions forthcoming on a potential capital project and that those funds would be available to support that capital project. So when we take a look at what we're expecting for the future, I have a couple scenarios for you tonight. So the first scenario is our basic long-range plan. And what do we know about what's going to happen in the future? We know what we know today. So I would have said the same thing a couple of years ago and then COVID hit. So, anything can happen that will change the outcome of the finances for the school district. This long-range projection, take it with a grain of salt. It's as good as the day that the data was put into it and it's as good as the assumptions that were used in it. It's meant to be a guide. It's meant to be a guide to help you make decisions. It's not exactly what is going to happen. Things are going to change. You're going to react to what you see. You're going to make decisions on s- on budgets moving forward, and they will all impact the the outer years. But I I'll show you here shortly. Um I like to 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 think of this as a tool to help boards and administration know how. Soon they have to react to the circumstances that are coming down. So some of the assumptions that we've made in this draft of the long-range plan is for the revenues. We've assumed foundation aid is going to uh to increase at two point six three percent, and then at a conservative estimate after that, at only two percent. We have a scenario later which would be less than that. Uh we are assuming the expenditure-driven aids are based on very minimal increases. And that building aid would be tied to all of your capital projects, so that's not, building aid does not increase every year based on a specific percent. It's all tied to your your debt service and your capital projects. We're also assuming, this is very important to know, that the tax levy limit that we project, you would go out at. And that has not historically been the case for Owego. But in this projection, that's how we're showing it. We're assuming that you would go out at your tax levy limit, and we'll talk some more about that as well. Next slide, please. On the expenditure side, we are projecting it based, the expenditures and the salaries, we're p- uh projecting it based on the staff record right now for twenty-three, twenty-four. Health insurance, the trend can be in, you know, the low percentile to a negative percentile to, you know, the double digits. We have to use something. We used industry standard of health, of seven percent increase for health insurance each year. We would presume that the TRS and the ERS costs would remain relatively stable, although um as we know that they can go up and down. And then all other costs, including Bosie's, would increase modestly. The next slide does show you the five-year projection, and so looking at this. Uh it's going to show you what the tax levy limit is projected to be for the next several years based on what we know now. It would show you what your beginning fund balance is or your savings, what the operating surplus or deficit it would be projected at. And then the ending fund balance. So let's talk about the tax levy limit first. So this is a projection of your tax levy limit based on the things that we know right now, based on the pilots coming on or off schedule. Um and I'm gonna go over in detail the twenty-four, twenty-five tax levy limit, which is not set in stone yet. It's an early draft in big capital letters. Um but it would probab- it's gonna probably be around five point one six percent, and I'll talk about why it's that high. Then you see in twenty-six, twenty-seven, nineteen percent. This is uh what was referred to earlier this evening, well, on the fluctuation on your pilots. And the issues that it causes for your district. So we're gonna talk some more about that too, but that's related to Central New York Oil and Gas. So we're projecting based on all of these assumptions and that you go out at the tax levy limit. That you would have an operating surplus next year of one point one million dollars. Now, you think that's great, Harry? So remember that some of that is built on interest earnings. It's also because this projection, it's really important to remember that this is based on reality and what's happening. So the reality is, is you do not have every single staff member hired for the entire school year, all school year long. Nobody does these days. So you have people that un- unfortunately have to take positions in other places. You aren't able to hire right away. You have savings from a month or two or longer of positions that are open. So you have breakage, you have savings, and that all goes into this projection. When you go to budget, your budget is gonna look worse than this. I'll just tell you that right up front now, because you're gonna budget that you're gonna hire everybody for every single day of the year. You may not budget all for all of that interest earnings and some other events that would happen. So your budget's going to look worse than this. We would hope that you would break even or have a small surplus. So that's not a bad thing. Um it's finding the middle of the road, like what is a tolerable return? You know, what is a tolerable surplus or um experience that you would you would hope for for next year? Then in twenty-five, twenty-six, based on what we're seeing, it would, you'd have a deficit. So as we go out in the outer years, expenditures are going to increase at five pers- four to five percent, and revenues are gonna increase more closely to two. It's just simple math. You're not going to have enough revenues to offset your expenditures. I said the exact same thing probably seven years ago. So this is a, this is a problem that school districts have. You would have had a bigger issue if it hadn't been for um COVID. First, that that had wide, uh long, several years of an impact on your finances. And then the increase in foundation aid from the state, and I don't know that the state would have done that had it not been for everything that happened. So the state increased foundation aid significantly over the last three years, uh much more than two percent a year. And so you benefited from that, so you've had some, you've had some good years, and you were able to go out at a zero percent tax levy in twenty-three, twenty-four as a result. Now we're going back to those times where expenditures are going to exceed the increase in revenues. And so you're faced with a dilemma on how to make it all work. You're never going to get to a place where you have a deficit of three point five million, because you're gonna make rea- you're gonna react to this every year, and it's gonna change those outer years. So I could probably come in five years, and it's gonna look very similar, because you're you're gonna make adjustments that are gonna help you in the next year or two. And the outer years are going to look worse unless something happens with revenues, or you do something else drastic. I just wanted to really to make that, I I don't want to alarm you in those outer years because you're going to react to this, but this is very normal. So when I say that this could be used as a tool for you to help, help you decide how fast you have to react. I say to boards, how fast does it go red? So there are districts where it doesn't hit a deficit until the fifth year. There are districts in the region that they're in a deficit next year in this model. So it's really how fast are you looking at making reductions in uh expenses to make ends meet? You can still have a small deficit and still use some of your reserves. That's what they're there for, is to support costs. Costs. You can still do that. Um when you have a deficit, the reserves, while we budget them as a revenue, they're not an actual revenue. Um so it would create a small deficit, and that's okay. But you're not going to be able to support operations with three million dollars worth of reserves who run out of your savings account in no time. Let's move on to the next slide. So let's talk a little bit about the executive proposal. So between the first time that I did a draft of this and now the executive proposals come out, and she's thrown us a little bit of a curveball. So while foundation aid is fully funded by law, she is recommending changes to the formula. Which would uh decrease your um foundation aid by by law. It would change the formula so that districts would receive less aid than they had would under current law. So there's three things that she's pr- uh proposed. I, these are Cynthia's order of importance, alright? So other people may have a different opinion. This is how I, how um I've ranked them. There's the removal of the safe harmless calculation, the change in the inflationary figure, and then the removal of the minimum increase. If you go to the next slide, Marcy, I'll talk about the safe harmless. So districts that by uh the current formula would receive less foundation aid than they are currently receiving in this school year. Uh are are in a safe harmless category, so they would receive the same amount of foundation aid. And this is usually because there's been declining enrollment over years. So foundation aid, for those of you who may not be familiar, you boil it all down, it's an amount per child times a child count. Now, each of those are infinitely more complicated than that, but when you boil it down to it, that's what it comes down to. So when your student count decreases. You're, you should receive less aid, so that's the way the formula works. So many districts in the state have have changes in enrollment that have decreased their calculated aid. But we've never taken that money back from them, alright? We've held them harmless. We keep giving them the same amount. And on top of that then, and I'll talk about that in another two slides, these districts usually get a minimum increase of like one to three percent. So what the governor is proposing is she's proposing a change in this, in that we would go back to formula. So those districts that are overfunded would go back, but in some pieces, this is millions of dollars for districts. Um and a and a hard hit to their budget, and so she's proposing a transition adjustment that would help phase that in. Being, I was, having gone through things like this before. If this were to go through in law, it, I would have to assume it would continue, and the goal is to get everybody back to formula. So it would continue as a transition um in a downward trajectory for those districts. Owego is not in this position right now, but why is this important to you? Because if you had thirty-seven less of that student count this coming school year, you would be in a position where you would be overfunded. So all districts really need to be concerned about this, because if you have changes to the data points in your formula. And the the big one is declining enrollment, which many districts in this region face. That eventually, all of us will be in this position where we would be overfunded, so we have to um to worry about this. And it obviously has a significant impact on a large uh amount of districts in the state. I've heard it quoted, forty-five percent of the districts are in this position in the state. Uh it's not that many in this region. There's only four um plus five. There's one, there's a fifth one that's moving into this. Um this position in this region. So that's one of the things that I think is most important in her proposal. If you go to the next slide, we'll talk about the inflationary figure. So still following the 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 foundation aid formula, foundation formula would still work, but she's. She's proposing a change to a piece of the of the formula, and that's the inflationary figure. So current law allows for the inflationary figure to be based on the last uh calendar year. So it would be two thousand twenty-three for next year's aid. And so when I talked about that amount per child times the number of students, that amount per child is increased by an inflationary figure every year. So this um based on current law, it would be four point one percent for for next year's aid. Last year was eight percent. That's one of the reasons foundation aid increased so much for all districts across the state is because huge inflation, huge inflationary factor. She's proposing to change this to a ten-year average. So what that's going to to do is bring the, bring that down to probably in a two percent range forever. So it would be very hard to have a high inflationary factor for foundation aid when you had a high inflation, because you're using a ten-year average. Now, doubles advocate, you can go to the other side and say, hey, when you have really low inflation, you can still be getting the two percent range. Um but I think it's more in, it's, it's gonna be harder for districts when you have out-of-pocket costs increasing at eight percent. And you're only receiving two percent on that inflationary figure. So the difference between four point one and two point four for this region, for the Burt Taiko Bosie's region, is just under five million dollars. For Owego Apaliken, that's three hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars, but you would be not receiving. It's not money that you've ever received. You, it's not, it's not a, it's not like it's a cut, but it's money that you should have received. So it's a cut of 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 aid that um by the, by her proposed changes. And the third change is the removal of the minimum increase. So I mentioned that those districts that are overfunded, they are held harmless, and then the legislature usually says, hey, we're gonna give you a one to three percent increase on top of that. So this also impacts you, because your aid increase under her current proposal is only one point six percent. So if they were to say do a two percent minimum increase like they've done in past years, or a three percent, you would have received more aid under that. So just for example, um if it goes to her uh proposal, you would receive a one point six percent increase in foundation aid. Two percent is eighty thousand dollars more. So these are all things that are going to be discussed, I think, quite a bit, but in the legislature will ponder this. Um my concern is what can the state afford? What can the legislature afford to put back in? I think there'll be a very strong push for number one. I don't know that they're gonna be able to afford number two. Or um we'll see what, we'll see what happens with politics, and that's what the advocacy will be all about for a week into this. So there's another uh two months to go on the advocacy for this, um and so more, much more to come on this. So what would it look like, that long-range projection, if we use the governor's proposal? Um I showed you previously that in twenty-four, twenty-five, uh it was an operating surplus of one point one million. Now you'd be under a million, assuming foundation aid would increase at one point six versus two point six. Next slide. Onto the tax levy limit calculation. I do wanna walk you through the tax levy limit calculation because it is impacted by those pilots, and that's a really big deal for your district. So there's a, an eight-step calculation. I'm not gonna read through it on this slide. I'm gonna go through on the next slide with the actual numbers. So if Marcy can go to the next slide. But you start with the prior year levy, so whatever your levy was for this this past year, it's seventeen point nine million dollars. You start with that. To that, you're allowed to increase it by your brick and mortar growth or your tax-based growth factor. So the state determines. We don't determine, we just pull, the, it's a report that I get that I pull the number off of. Um they do, they say you have some brick and mortar growth in your district, and so that should be. Bringing essentially people into the district, and you should be allowed to tax more for that to be uh because of this additional growth in your tax base. Whether that's true or not is, you know, up for debate, but your brick and mortar growth this year is pretty high. Um these ti- the 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 lowest you can go is one. We have plenty of districts in the region where it's one or just over, one point zero 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 zero. Yours is one point zero zero eight nine, so that is, that is pretty high. It's one of your highest ones that you've had. So this would bring your tax levy to, tax levy limit to eighteen million fifty-nine thousand. Then what they do is they add back in last year's pilots. Alright, so they're gonna say, all the pilots are going back into the tax levy for this calculation to add in the two percent CPI uh allowable increase. So they add the pilots in from last year, they subtract out the capital levy, because they're not going to let you get the two percent increase on the capital portion of this. So they make those adjustments, then they apply the allowable growth factor. Right now, because inflation is much higher than two percent, it's capped at two percent. In the years where inflation was lower than two percent, then this would be equal to inflation CPI. So we've had years where it's very low, so I've seen it well under two percent before. Um right now, and past this, past year, so here, you know, we're obviously at the cap of two percent. So when you hear the two percent tax levy limit, that's where that comes from, that allowable growth factor. So once you add in the two percent. Then you're allowed to add in a carryover if you have one from the prior year. This is the first year in a long time, if not ever, but Owego Apaliken has had a carryover. So because you went out at a zero tax levy limit last year. Uh and your tax levy was less than the tax levy limit before exemptions by a hundred and forty thousand dollars. You're allowed to carry that over and actually use that as part of your tax levy limit calculation this year. So there are a hundred and forty thousand gets added in. Then, you're obviously not going to charge the tax base for the pilots that you are going to receive. They pay their taxes separately, so you subtract out the pilots for next year. And then that comes up with your tax levy limit before exemptions, and then you're, you add back in your capital exemption. Um and you add in ni- this coming year, ERS exemption. So when ERS or TRS rates increase by more than two percentages, percentage points. It's two point one for next year. Anything over two, you get an ERS exemption for. It's a whole whopping five thousand dollars. That number's probably gonna change. I haven't um, I have to verify that calculation yet. And then that would lead to your maximum allowable tax levy limit very early draft. Some of these numbers could change just a little bit. But that would be eighteen million eight hundred and twenty-four thousand. Next slide, please. Um which would be a nine hundred and twenty-four thousand dollar increase or five point one six percent. So that's a fairly high tax levy limit for you. And if you go to the next slide, that nine hundred and twenty-four thousand, we've broken down into, to show you where it's coming from. So a hundred and fifty-nine thousand of it is coming from that brick and mortar growth. Four hundred and thirty-two thousand of it is coming from the CPI two percent. Twenty thousand, so next to nothing, is coming from capital. A hundred and sixty-seven thousand is related to the best buy pilot returning to the rolls. I'll talk more about that. Five thousand dollars from ERS and a hundred and forty thousand dollars from the the carryover from twenty-three, twenty-four. So the best buy pilot is slowly returning to the rolls, and as that happens. So does their, that portion of their assessment. So the pool for the total assessment becomes larger. So as pilots go back to the rolls, go back on the levy, so does their assessment, and that levy is then spread across that larger assessment. So in theory, they're paying their fair share of that increase. So when we have districts that have pilots of substantial nature go back on the rolls. We often, um the districts often will publicize that, the tax levy limit, five point one six. Tax levy limit without pilots, in this case, would be just over four, somewhere over four. So it's not, the pilot isn't really the driver of your larger tax levy limit. It's all of those other things this year. But the same thing is gonna happen when Central New York Oil and Gas go back on the rolls. That we've already projected that out based on everything we know now. It's, you're looking at a nineteen or twenty percent tax levy limit in those years. So the issue becomes, that's really hard to sell. You need a lot of PR on that. That's really difficult. Because no, you know, everyone. It's gonna be hard to swallow that their ta- like the individual taxpayers' taxes are not going to increase by twenty percent. When Central New York Oil and Gas returns to the rolls, that pie of assessment becomes that much bigger. So they should pay that same, they're paying a hundred percent right now on as a pilot. They should pay their fair share of that taxes, and everybody else, if all things else stay the same. They should pay their fair share of that taxes, and everybody else, if all things else stay the same, would pay the same amount as they are now. So they, they, everybody else should not see a twenty percent increase. So that's why we would publicize it as twenty percent tax levy limit, uh, without the pilots, whatever it would be, two percent or whatever it is that year. Um, but it is a, it's a hard sell. And the same thing is happening to a much smaller degree with best buy this year. And this is why we're hoping with our legislation that would somehow improve how we're able to present this to the public or change the formula altogether, that it wouldn't hurt districts that have these, these large pilots. So if you go to the next slide, this is a scenario where foundation aid goes out at the governor's proposal, which I hope won't happen. And that the board decides to go somewhere between less than the five point one six. I, I have no recommendation, and I have, you know, I don't know what you're thinking, but I wanted to show you something. So if the board were to go at three percent, you could certainly choose to go at five point one six or any number you choose. The surplus for next year would obviously be impacted. So we started with a one point one million dollar surplus. We're down to a nine hundred and forty-eight thousand dollar surplus with the executive proposal. Now we're down to a five hundred and sixty-one thousand dollar surplus in twenty-four, twenty-five, and those outer years obviously look much worse. And that surplus really, at this point in time, is really all being driven by interest earnings. Again, just to reiterate, this is based on reality. So this is based on what you're actually experiencing this year. This is not based on budget. So certain items, when we put together the first draft of the budget, it's going to look worse than what you're seeing here tonight. Next slide. Before I move on to the investments, does anyone have any questions for me from the board?
Okay, I do. Um, so I'm sure maybe you've already discussed this, but unfortunately, we're gonna have a lot of, uh, costs of removing our, uh, Indian from a lot of areas around the district.
Mm-hmm.
Where would that fall into being able to cover those expenses? I think it's gonna add up really quickly.
Sure, sure. And, uh, if you remember back on the one slide, we had appropriated, or we'd incre- decreased the appropriated fund allowance a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, and that was for a one-time capital project. Part of that one-time capital project was actually, um, the plan to, to pay for some of this, these costs for you, for the change of your logo. So the district has already made some of those, um, plans, knew this was coming and planned for some of that. I, I can't say what the total cost of all of that's gonna be. It's obviously a lot. Uh, but the, that, that capital work, uh, would pay for some of it, and some of that capital work, I, I do believe that that was building aidable. So you will be able to get-
That's the trick. We're trying, we have to figure out where to do it. We'd like to do it capital side, because you wanna try to try to aid if you can.
Mm-hmm.
That's, that's part of what we're, what we're figuring out.
Is there a limit on how much in terms of what you can, it's needable for that type of stuff?
Depends on the project we're in and, and the scope of the project and what will fit.
So just the gym floor and high school?
That's what we're gonna talk about next. That's gonna be in it.
Okay.
Obviously, we're looking at every way to handle that. That would be for the best benefit, um, and the most cost-effective, and that would generate, if possible, aid that would come back to recoup some of that cost.
When does that have to be done, the gym or just all the logos up there?
Uh, we, by June thirtieth. So we have, you're gonna hear in the capitals, some of the, the big pieces that are gonna, that we're getting ready to take care of here shortly.
Alright.
Okay.
I mean- I had a question about just going back to the pilots again, just to make sure I understand. So like going back to the, this, the, uh, gas one, if we're going out nineteen percent, let's say, you're saying that our tax levy could be lower. It's just we have to make sure that we explain to our taxpayers that that's not what our levy's gonna be to our taxpayers. A portion of that is meant because they're coming, they're coming onto the roles to pay their fair share. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
So it could be-
But by law, we have to-
You have to publicize that nineteen percent, that law.
But it can be explained, you know-
Yes.
Yes.
Completely, as to what's going on, so that our taxpayers understand they're not gonna have a twenty percent increase in their taxes.
And that's what other districts have done. And so we've had, uh, Susquehanna Valley, Windsor have all had, um, sizable pilots, not that sizable. Um, several percentage points maybe hitting the tax levy limit, and they have always publicized it. The tax levy limit is, whatever it is, tax levy limit without pilots is this number. And really focusing on that second number, the lower number, because that's what should impact the average homeowner. Notwithstanding changes to equalization rates and, um, the rest, all the other things, but yeah.
All the other things. Well, again, it comes back to really good communication to our folks here in the community, make sure they know what's going on, yes.
Yeah, it's a, it's a serious PR campaign.
But really cri- critical, so again, you'd agree with us, I'm sure, is, uh, that folks tend to think that when we publish the, uh, tax levy increase, that that's the identical to what's gonna be on their tax bill. And it could be further from the truth. It's just if the tax levy, uh, this year is eighteen million, and next year, pick a number, is eighteen million five hundred thousand, whatever it comes out to be, that's the increase in total dollars that goes out, okay? Now, uh, the gas companies' assessments go on the rolls, just like everybody else's rolls. They hit the rolls. So they're gonna eat their fair share, the, 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 what, what was it? The million? How much was it? A million? The nineteen percent was like a million?
Um, I don't have that figure in front of me, but I think it's hard to-
It was on your earlier chart, but be that as it may, they're, they're gonna, their assessment's gonna be there to, to take on that, their fair share of that. So what you saw in your tax bill the year before should be very similar to what you see in your tax bill this year. Even though that nineteen percent sounds scary, that's not what you're gonna see. And that's the part that's hard to communicate, because as you mentioned, that's when all of a sudden Officer Real Property comes out with, you know, equalization rates and assessed valuations, and that's how it act, and we have five towns in our district.
Mm-hmm.
So, and the, 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 the implications in, in the, uh, just the assessments alone can go depending on which town they hit. And if I remember right, the gas company is spread around. It's not all town of Oego, is it? I'm not sure. Do you know? I know there, this, these came-
Might have some of the difference.
Another really important thing to- I think some are nickels.
I think it's a nickel.
The, the, another thing to remember is these, these pilot agreements were, I think they were twenty-year pilots.
Yeah.
Yes.
So they came into existence before the tax levy formula even existed, okay? The tax levy formula came out after these pilots were granted by the IDA. So nobody even knew. It kinda goes back to what you were saying about trying to predict things. Nobody even knew there was gonna be a tax lev- tax cap formula back then. So, um, it's really complex. It's really complicated. And any PR we can get to try to, I've seen superintendents try to explain this to the public and crash and burn because it's so complicated, you know, uh, for people to digest. So hopefully, we can do a good job.
Marcy, if you could just go back to that slide, one of them that had that increase on a dive, um-
That's true.
Yeah, keep going back. Yeah, keep going. Yep, there, oop, that, that was it. I just wanna, um, to know that you're going to be hearing about a proposed capital project. And I, I did speak, um, about this with district administration, that, that if you choose a capital project that would have an additional cost to the taxpayers, um, sometimes you do a capital project that has no additional tax increase. Sometimes you do a project that unfortunately, there's just too big of a project. You have work that has to be done. There has to be some share passed on to the taxpayers. It happens. The timing of this project is gonna be really critical because that could also impact the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year and compound your ni- you know, nineteen or twenty percent issue with Central New York Oil and Gas. So we've talked about that, about how we could strategically, if possible, push that into the twenty-seven, twenty-eight year so that you don't have these two issues at the same time. And some of that would depend on how quickly some of this work may have to happen. So I just wanted to, um, to mention that's an, another piece to consider going.
Correct me if I'm wrong, too, if we go out at something less, then we create that carryover again for the next year, which also impacts it.
It depends on how far less you go out. You have to go out less than the tax levy limit before the exemptions are added back in. Certainly, if you want out, um, well, I can't say that. But it, it, you've gone out at low tax levies before and not had a carryover. This was a unique year for you. And I just wanna remind everyone that if your budget fails, then you go back to the same tax levy as the prior year. So if you go out, it, it's hard because if you go out at nineteen point three eight, or whatever that is in that year, and it fails twice, then you would be forced to have a tax levy, and you would have, that would be catastrophic for the district. So this PR campaign is helping the people understand this is really critical.
So it's basically amounts to that, uh, almost two million dollars.
It's three million. It's three million. I'm pretty sure it's three million for the pilot.
With that, we do, the educational program in the district would, like you said, would devastate.
It would be, yes, it would be catastrophic.
So to that point, I understand this might be part of that, getting the information out. Uh, do we have a plan, uh, to, I assume? We have a plan to, because I've seen, like Jean said, wouldn't put it all on superintendent to sit in front of, uh, I'm worried people not solely, but there's a PR plan to get this information out to taxpayers so they understand.
Yeah, absolutely. We'll communicate that in all the community, uh, updates that we do, uh, presentations that we do throughout, obviously, these board presentations as well. Uh, literature that's gonna go to taxpayers to try to keep that in front of them, to remind them of what the situation is. And I think, you know, as Mr. Civic said, we've had years where we've been zero percent. And we've seen some towns, based on the equalization rate, go up twenty-five, and others go down minus two. So it's, it's, it's gonna fluctuate, and it's really difficult for people to understand. We don't control that part of it, any part of that, so even to come out and say, you know, you're gonna go at X percent, well, it might end up higher than that when they get their, uh, if there's change in equalization in their assessment. So it's just a, it's, it's a tricky thing to communicate.
A total amount. How that is parsed out, excluding the pilots, you know, that's separate, but how that is parsed out between the towns is, is a factor of things out of your control, so.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. And then real quickly, I believe there have been some questions on, on, on investments, so I'm just gonna run, I'm gonna zip through this information.
Alright.
Because you probably are ready to stop hearing me talk. Um, but your investment policy, you do have an investment policy, I believe that you've been reviewing this. And really, the objectives are that, of that are to conform with all the legal requirements, um, to safeguard your principal. We never wanna lose principal. Um, but also provide sufficient money to, to pay your operating expenditures. I'll have cash on hand to do that, and then to obtain a reasonable rate of return. Next slide, please. So your, uh, policy does delegate the authority, um, to the treasurer, and we do follow all of the general municipal law related to allowing for investments. And if you go to the next slide, please. Um, the treasurer is appointed at the reorganizational meeting, and your de- uh, your treasurer and deputy treasurer are employees at the central business office. Um, the deputy treasurer only acts when the treasurer is unable to act in this manner. You also designate the banks that we can use. Um, and that you've authori- you also authorize that treasurer and deputy treasurer to make these investments for you. There's more information on there, but I'm just gonna keep going. There are, um, there's very strict controls at the central business office when we do anything with banking. Uh, we're fortunate in that regard. If it had to be done in-house, there's just simply not enough people to have all of those layers of security. But because we are a large organization working with multiple school districts, we have enough layers that we can have multiple layers of, um, review and approval so that no one person starts a transaction with the bank and ends a transaction with the bank. It goes through all sorts of approvals. We use multi-factor identification, authentication, rather, security administrators, et cetera, et cetera. Um, but we do use online, uh, banking for, uh, most of the transactions. Next slide, please. We do, we're essentially checking your cash position every single day. You're checking your, uh, your balances in your accounts, um, to make sure that they are safeguarded. Uh, we are preparing cash flows on a weekly basis to see what your cash is looking like. And then any idle funds that we identify, we're obviously trying to invest as much of that as possible. Uh, we typically invest historically in either ca- uh, certificate of deposits or, um, treasury bills or T-bills. And right now, we're solely, um, investing in T-bills. They have a better rate of return. And these next few charts, I'm not gonna go over them in a lot of detail, but they just show, um, all the investments that have been made. Um, we really started heavily investing in June of twenty-two. That's when the interest rates turned around. They were at one point five three. In June of twenty-two, they're over five right now. So if you, um, move ahead, Marcy, one slide, you'll see that right now in those darker, um, the dark black, sort of dark black, uh, numbers there, that we have operating cash in, reserves out in T-bills right now, earning anywhere from five point two seven, two five to five point four three percent. Uh, we continually monitor the cash levels to put out appropriate T-bills. Some year, some points of the year, you have more cash than others. Uh, we also are investing cash in the cafeteria fund, the debt service fund. And I, I just talked to, uh, Mr. Farrell about putting out a T-bill in the capital fund, uh, for capital, um, cash that we have there. We also have invested your scholarship funds, and you can see that in twenty-two, June of twenty-two, we invested two point seven million dollars. We're now up to two point nine million dollars of regular investments in the scholarship fund. That growth there is really related to the interest earnings in the scholarship fund. We're, um, earning five point one five on the current T-bill and the scholarship fund. We're doing to try to make as much interest as possible.
Cynthia, the main reason we asked you to do this was, I think, we had some folks in the public that thought we were able to go out and use the stock market, especially for, um, the, the scholarship funds.
Yes, but not, yeah.
And we're limited to those, what, three in-service? You got the CDs, the treasury bills, and the, and the savings accounts, right?
Yeah, they're listed in your policy, um, and those, you are, school districts really are limited, um, because you're not a high-risk business. You can't lose all, you need to protect the principal. You have to make sure that, um, that, that money is not at risk. But we obviously wanna earn as much as possible, so, uh, right now, the, the T-bills are the, the best, um, source for us to do that with.
I've been around so long that I remember why this came about. There were treasurers in small municipalities that did play the stock market and basically lost taxpayer money.
A shutter.
Right, yeah. And so the laws were put in place so that we can't lose the principal. That's really what it comes down to.
Mm-hmm.
So I just wanted, someone else to say it besides me.
Any questions?
No, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, thanks Cynthia. Thanks. So, uh, as you can see, that's, that's, this is complicated. Um, and there's not a day that goes by where we're not in communication, really, with Cynthia over something, especially Mr. Farrell and Cynthia are constantly in communication and, and, and forward-thinking and planning, which is obviously extremely important, uh, for the school district. So thank you, Cynthia, for sharing all that information. So, um, now we have, uh, Mr. Farrell and Mr. Christensen from Tamco. We're gonna talk about, um, the potential of a capital project.
Yep, so, uh, it's been the financial strategy of the school district and the operations and maintenance, uh, strategy of the school district to, uh, pretty much always be in a capital project. So over the last six or seven years, that's pretty much where we've been. And we've built off of every couple of years going out to the public to vote for a capital project. The reason you do that is, one, you wanna keep your school district, um, well-maintained, and you wanna be smart about the way you do it. So there's really two sources of funds to do that. You can do it by paying money out of your general fund, which then puts all of the onus pretty much on the taxpayer, um, the local taxpayer. Or you go out of capital, and then you use borrowing to your advantage over a long period of time, where you then receive building aid from New York State. That typically is about the same amount of money that you pay in debt service. And then you get a particular percentage of aid. Ours is about, what, eighty percent? Close to that, something like that, something like that. So every time you think about doing something to the school district, which is back to your question, Joe, about, you know, how are we gonna fix some of the issues in the school district around mascot, it's smarter if you do that through capital, if you can receive aid on it, rather than allowing it to come out of a, make the general fund, which is- Rather than allowing it to come out of the make, the general fund, which is generally the taxpayer's dollar, which is stated, same idea. Where you do that, be smart about that, so um.
Bob, can I just ask you, are you gonna talk about the building condition reports? I mean, so so people understand that. Was it every five years?
Every five years, you have to go through a building.
Every five years, we we submit these to the state of New York and it goes to facilities planning, right? So they keep track of our buildings. Because that came about because of all the problems down in New York City where they let the buildings basically fall apart. And then it became a mammoth expense to try to remedy it. So now the district has to do these every five years and submit them to Albany, to SED or facilities planning. So they keep track of how many times you sent this report in and and didn't fix the roof on, say, this building. It needs to be replaced, then how come you didn't do it? So they're they're basically making sure that we maintain our buildings. So that's why it's so important that we do these uh capital projects on a regular basis so that we keep up with those repairs.
And when you're in continual projects, you're pretty much aware um of what is going on in your buildings because you have engineers and architects and construction companies moving around your building. The the reality is that the condition survey can tell you the technical side of things. But once you get into a a building, you start to open a wall, that's where you really find out what needs to be done. Um and we're pretty ahead of that, we have a good sense of where we are as a school district and what needs to be done. And there's still quite a bit. Um one of the things you gotta remember is that the school district, when it was flooded in two thousand eleven, the entire focus and priority went on rebuilding the school district and mainly the elementary school. And that elongated time in which we were, we we really couldn't spend time here. It wasn't an opportunity to come to Apple Lake and fix Apple Lake, it was an opportunity to fix OFA. So we've been working over the last six or seven years to build out capital projects to address all of the rest of the school district that really hadn't gotten the attention anymore. And we've been doing that right along, so you saw that tonight. Apple Lake, and this is a more complicated project, cause it's an old building. Um where you now have been moving through OFA, you're gonna hear that a little bit from Bill tonight. But um couple of things to note, think about. One, I hate to say it, but OES is no longer a new building. All right, it is about, well, it's going to be ten years old soon. Now, you'll say ten years old, isn't that old? It's not so much the building itself as it is the mechanical uh systems inside of it. The middle school is now twenty years old at this point, right? So at twenty years, the mechanical systems inside of that are starting to fail. And just to keep those up, it takes quite a bit of money um in maintenance. So you're gonna have to decide, decide to do it through the capital side, or you're gonna make the budget do it, smart play with the capital side. So uh Bill's gonna talk a lot more about this and show you different things that we've done. But you're gonna get presented with some different scenarios of what, as a board, you wanna decide to do and which direction you wanna push us, the administration, to go towards um in terms of what you think the voters' appetites will be. And um those scenarios will will show different consequences as it relates to the budget and it relates to that tax cap that you saw. Um and there are very important decisions to make, because what you could do for ten million versus what you could do for twenty-five is very different. So just keep that in back of your mind about its relationship to budget. The decisions we're gonna make right now in this next couple of months with budget are gonna be directly related to the decisions on this capital project. And whether or not we're going out to vote for one or not. And the relationship between the two, if it gets confusing, please reach out, call, ask questions so that we can try to explain, cause it can get kinda confusing, the relationship between the two. So I'll turn it over to Bill and he can start on that.
That way, so I'm not talking over everyone's head. I'm Bill Christensen, I don't know if I've met, actually, I'll be, it's been a while since I've been out here, but it's great seeing you guys again. As Bob just said, yeah, this building, work started in this building right in the middle of COVID. Um so for those who don't know the story, schools closed suddenly. Uh I don't wanna open up any wounds here, but opened suddenly, closed suddenly on a Monday, if you may remember. And on Wednesday afternoon, we dug the sewer line, started digging the sewer line out of the middle of this hallway that you're walking in right now. The sewer line at that point in time had crumbled, uh was no longer functioning, we were starting to have some backups into the building. And so that break of time, maybe, I don't know, four months, uh it's all the way for the front, the door that you come in the side, all the way to where we are, turn the corner and go down another thirty feet. So nothing you ever could have done, and obviously with kids in the building, so uh it was kind of an interesting project. That's what it started with and then obviously a lot of renovation within this school. One of the challenges, though, as Bob just mentioned, was we did about two-thirds of the building was renovated. The auditorium was not touched, the air handler systems on that side of the building, the cafeteria was not addressed, the kitchen, things like that. So these are some of the challenges that we're kinda, I'm gonna kinda go through, kinda high level. This is more philosophical, more about um what direction gets you to start to think about your next capital project. It's certainly not as concrete, or I I don't look at the governor ever as concrete, the governor's budget, but definitely what we're looking at. Go ahead. Probably just push the arrow down maybe, or hit slide. One thing I will address, Cynthia, is is the plan, you have several. You have it in the middle of the floor, in the end zones and different things, so if I don't address that, I'll tell you what our plan is for that. So these are things I'm gonna kinda go through pretty quickly. Some of the prior work, I'm not gonna touch on all the prior work, you've done a lot of work, you've been in construction now for, it'll be going on, your fifth year, actually, it'll be in construction. We do recommend to districts, with the way aid flows financially, you get your voters used to it, you do constant construction. That's kind of my experience with it. Uh this idea that the days of doing the thirty, forty million dollar project every ten years really doesn't seem to work anymore. First of all, construction itself, you can't do thirty million dollars in a year like we used to do. If you can do anywhere from seven to ten million dollars a year, you're you're doing something. Uh it's a workforce problem, that's a a material problem. And so at the same time, if you have a thirty million dollar project and you're waiting to close that out to two or three years down the road, you're actually delaying, you do different things like that. So we try to get districts to do smaller projects, which is gonna be a little counterproductive, what I'm gonna talk about here in a minute. Um what's coming up this summer, I just make you aware of it, just what's already in plans, uh what's coming in it. We'll talk about four different scenarios here, go ahead. So last summer, you saw the tennis courts over at OFA, those were completely redone. Transportation facility, the parking lot and the mechanical system in the transportation facility was redone as well. That project is pretty much, it is complete at this point, obviously, the tennis courts are, the HVAC system, there were some delays in getting materials, but that is up and running um at this point in time, so that was all last summer. Uh you might also remember summers before that, I could go on, I could spend an hour just on what you've done last year, so I won't bore you with that, go ahead. So this summer was coming up, is the music suite upgrades, um I'm working with, Lindsay's still here, with the architect, uh that's a high priority. Uh they're at OFA, kind of meet their needs program, means you heard at the very beginning, it's nice and some uniqueness to your music program. Been a lot of, around a lot of music programs myself, and I would say yours is extremely unique. Um I love the idea of modern band, that is cool, uh definitely kids are into it. But your facility was not built that way, it was built for orchestra, traditional band, marching band, so that's one of them. The gym floor and the interior of the gym has, I would say, some minor upgrades, the floor itself has had its lifespan right now. So you could not uh sand that down, you couldn't actually do that logo if you wanted to. You would actually get below the board strength, well, you could, but as the basketball goes over the logo, everyone in the gym will know, cause the ball's gonna stay there. Uh so that obviously, it's time for a new floor, it's had its lifespan. So that's already scheduled, that is going into SED within the next two to three weeks. Um your LGI over at OFA, it already has some work that's been going on, it's kind of been between two or three different phases. But there are new seats going in there, there's some lighting going in there and then some ADA access, that's one thing that that's been missing. If you recall, that spaces are below grade, so we need to address the the access to that. And then the pool, the pool is getting up there in age. You have tile work that needs to be done, the bleachers, uh add aluminum and steel and add a pool, and it never goes well. Uh it's called rust, so your your bleachers are at that point in time. And you have some infrastructure that we're gonna address as well, from the pump system, the uh filter systems, the pump systems. And then some plumbing issues, just over the years, you have some plumbing failures, things are starting to leak, do things like that, so we're gonna address that. Go ahead, so that's this summer, okay, in a nutshell. There's a lot more to it, but I figure for the sake of time, that's kind of what we're working on right now. So using the building condition survey, as Jean just mentioned. So it is a five-year plan, you're about halfway through your five years of that plan. Working with the architect, when we did the building condition survey, you basically evaluate all your mechanical systems, your plumbing systems, anything that's going to what they call age out or life out at that point in time. And you have some that's coming, I've already mentioned some here today, yes, the auditorium was well past that time period. Kitchen, cafeteria, there's also some more infrastructure here. I'll give you an example, um which was actually kinda cool to see, but uh not cool when you're trying to do construction. Was, as we got to the sewer line around around the corner here, at some point in time, there was a science lab there, I can tell you that. I don't know when, but maybe it could have been way back at the beginning, because you had glass pipes. And back in the fifties and sixties, you would have glass as a former science experiment, acid doesn't react to all the different things, especially the, what the pipes were made out of, so they would make glass, uh put glass in there. Well, problem with that in an elementary school is glass sewer lines doesn't work very well. And so they were starting to have all kinds of problems, it was plugging, it was backing up. For those that work here know what I'm talking about, cause they can smell it. So we addressed a lot of it, but you do have additional uh glass pipe that is in there. You also have some additional drainage lines outside, so I should say some uh more drainage outside that has well, well past its la- lifespan, we, I don't think it's collapsed, but um there's some additional infrastructure in those. Power upgrades were ki- were mostly done, although in that area that wasn't touched too much, there would be more power upgrades needed over there. Uh your boiler system though was upgraded, all of that was done, your air conditioning in the classroom sides now and all of that's been been addressed uh between your HARP money, the federal money and your last project. Uh and then there was a lot of talk about playgrounds, your playgrounds are starting to age out there, some parts are new, some parts were just repaired. But still, it's, they're they're not getting any younger, and then access to that. You have a lot of special education students, as you know, that you bring students into your district. So making sure all all facilities are accessible to all of them all the time is important. Over at OES, and and Bob has stole my thunder, it's uh anytime you work with districts that have new schools, uh it's not new anymore, it's approaching the ten-year mark. So not that things are going to fail and and it's not going to have to be completely redone, but your mechanical systems, if you can get eight to twelve years on a compressor, you're doing something right. You have some massive mechanical systems on that, on that school, as you can imagine. You have several different roof systems that are in in place there. So the maintenance on the roofs have been kept up, but at the same time, you have some that are like ten-year type of warranty issues uh that we're starting to look at, lighting, we're already dealing with one lighting issue in the gym. And these are, believe it or not, LED lighting was not a normal, everyday thing you put in schools when that school was built. That's a generation one LED lighting system. And there's a reason they're up to generation seven now, because they've got a lot better at it. And so those lights are starting to fail as we speak right now, so our plan for that is to address it. Oh, at OFA, I'm I'm really making it simple, but there is a significant amount of work at OFA and it starts with the roof. And this'll make sense when I talk about the scenarios here in a minute. Your roof is pretty much, um I would say it's it's approaching the end of the lifespan. It's not, could you get another ten years out of it, you definitely could, but what is well past your lifespan is your mechanical units. And so it becomes this issue of, when you take a mechanical unit off and you put a pneumatic mechanical unit on, you want that mechanical unit needs to last fifteen years. Well, if you don't fix the roof that's underneath it, somewhere along the line, you're gonna have to pull the mechanical unit back off, fix the roof and then put it back again. Which is just doubling your cost, obviously, and you also run the risk with stated that they wouldn't aid that second go-around, because they would see that it really shouldn't have been done the first time. That's where your building condition survey comes in, it's identified these items. There's also, we did some classroom renovations a few years back, I remember in the downstairs area, obviously, the cafeteria was done. Uh there was a science room, a bunch of science labs, there were some art rooms, there were all of those. There's a whole nother side to the school that wasn't really renovated, uh was not, uh so it has the original mechanical systems, unit ventilators, has the uh same ceilings that are in there, some still have the, my favorite, which is the fans. Uh never seen that before, but it is, I guess they're effective. Uh and then you have some plumbing issues, uh definitely coming up with some of the older bathrooms that are are showing up. The big thing in the middle school is your units, and I'll use this as an example for getting the scenarios. You're looking at somewhere in the next two to three years, um you can skip that one for the next one. Uh maybe two hundred to three hundred thousand dollars is what we're kinda telling on the budget for mechanical work that's gonna need to get done. And that's gonna be replacing compressors, large units, and uh even some of your duct work that no longer meets SED approval. Which which basically, without being technical, is not shit, that means they committed a building, things like that. So if you spend a quarter of a million dollars, that's coming directly out of your general fund, that's coming directly out of your maintenance funds, that's in driving any aid on that. These these same units are at the end of their lifespan, if you put them into a capital project, you're gonna drive your eighty percent aid back on those. So the financially smart thing most districts agree with is that if you're in a project, to prioritize those, and that's what we're kinda looking at. Um in the current project, we are addressing um your your former mascot, uh it was over break, we did uh the the new Toronto floor. You might remember that was in the last project, we did remove uh the logo from there, that was uh very cost-effective, I'll tell you, it was ten thousand dollars. Uh that was a great, Frank Martino, Martino Tile did that, we did it by hand. Um and took it back out versus if you were to cut that out and put another logo in, it starts at seventy-five thousand, goes up from there. So it was wonderful for him to do that and uh kind of definitely was a huge savings there. The end zones have already been uh prepared, as far as those have been ordered, we're just waiting at the time and probably the winter to go away, so that's been addressed as well. So you have Indians in in the end zone as well. And then, of course, the basketball floor, we talked about that, it'll be addressed with uh the new floor going in. Obviously, whatever logos, bringing yourself, come up with, you're fine with that. So a lot of those others, now there are other ones, and and Bob made this point before, when they fit into a project, it makes sense, there are going to be outside costs though. Things like uniforms, other things like that, unfortunately, doesn't fit into the capital side. And we have to be careful, um as far as a lot, not every single logo can just automatically go into capital. The majority of the ones, the uh certainly, the uh gym floor isn't an issue there. The end zone, based on the way it was funded, the field was funded, I don't see an issue with that one. And uh obviously, your floor in Toronto, uh that's ten thousand dollars is making it, it's a worry about, so. So that's kinda where we're at with that piece of it. So the four different scenarios, and typically, you vote in May. You have, historically, the last at least two to three years, you voted in May with your prop, with your budget vote. And so staying on that, we like that timeline, uh your district seems to like that timeline, it works well with the architect. Where we're able to, you're approving in May, they get into design, they submit, as as we talked about, they submit sometime between December, January and February. And then once they do that, uh they're coming back out potentially for that next summer. All right, so so there's some leeway in there. Uh like I mentioned before, we like to do projects or submissions, if your referendums are larger, we like to do referendums in the eight to ten million dollar mark. The architects aren't standing here tonight, so I get to say that, architects like to do one big submission, because it's, they can get, basically, one time. Basically, you submit at one time and get one big approval. But financially, typically, and the way you're gonna build it, it doesn't make a lot of sense to get an approval. So potentially, an approval, let's say, in May and June on an SED project, and then it takes two and a half years or two years to build, it just doesn't seem to make any sense to that. So with that being said, these are the four different scenarios that I come up with, but the first one is what you've been doing. And I know this will be very hard to read, I'll send it, I know Bob has it too, you can get it in your hands. Uh you won't need to read a lot of them, it'll be really the impact part of it that everyone really wants to know, but I wanted to at least put them up there and explain what they look like. So the first one, right around ten million, nine point three million, you would use one point nine in capital reserve, so that would go into the project and you wouldn't have any impact. That's what you've been doing pretty much every year, for at least the last two or three years, you've been right in that range of nine to twelve million dollars. And you really, you have not had any impact whatsoever, and we've been doing the projects. The challenge with that, which I'll say this again at the end, I'm sure, but is we're now starting to approach needs that are larger than nine or ten million dollars at a time. So our preliminary estimate to take the roof off, replace all the units and all the duct work that's gonna go with that, your control systems. And then, once you do all of that, you're touching all the ceilings and all the rooms that that impacts, and now you're putting, you're not gonna put the old ceilings back in, so new ceilings. It makes sense at that point in time to also do the floors and do the rest of it. Quickly blowing right past nine million dollars, and you're getting into the name of fifteen, sixteen, seventeen at least at that point in time. So at least to consider it, if we stayed with the ten million dollars a year, it would just be carved up in smaller sections. Uh but I am concerned about some of the bigger items, and it is honestly why we haven't done some of the bigger items yet, like the mechanical systems at OFA. Uh it made more sense to work on the downstairs to get the programs from your career center and all of those up and running first, so. So this is the first one, go ahead, Marcy. You won't really be able to read that, I'm sure, uh but basically, this is the column that shows your estimated local share on the project. This is the aid that you're you're driving um here to your debt. So it's it's impossible to see, which we'll we'll send it out to you. This stuff up here, I just wanted, I wanna show you more, this is where the numbers come from, they're not just, these come from fiscal advisors, which in your district, that's Christine Crowley, that does that. Uh and then down here at the bottom, it kinda gives you some some idea of what some of the bases is our, like I said, your aid ratio is eighty point one um per second. So that kinda flows it out, your bonds are fifteen years, so if you didn't know that, uh might be a big fact for you, you basically go up fifteen years. This scenario here, and Cynthia brought up a good point before, does show driving that aid that first in twenty-seven, so that's something we could work with. It doesn't wanna make any difference for the same. So that's something we could work with. It doesn't want to make any difference for the sake of it. Might make more sense to push that one more year, which means we probably just do a third, maybe a third phase or something like that. Or just skip one summer or do some smaller things. So this is the first one. This is typically what you've been doing. So go ahead. The second one, the second one kind of came about when, how we were talking about. This is a slightly larger referendum, about fourteen fourteen million dollars, fourteen point one. But it's using another million dollars in reserves, putting it in your capital reserve. So now you're up here three million dollars in your capital reserve. Still has no local impact. Go ahead, Marcin. Has no local impact. Basically, it almost looks exactly the same. We did this more for some comparison for us to see what it would look like. I'm not sure. That would be totally obviously up to you and working with CDO. But not putting three million dollars in the project, if you had to, I guess you could. But that would really be up to your own, your own peruse to whether or not you really wanted to do that. The third scenario is really these next two are the ones that we're kind of talking the most about. Because the first time we're talking about what a local impact would look like if you went out. So the first one is twenty million dollars and that's again putting that one point nine in there. And so I just used two numbers as far as impact. And so if you had a hundred thousand on our home and you're on basic star, basically what the average impact would be about twelve dollars on that. If you have the enhanced star, which every district has a different amount of people that are on that. That's people over the ages sixty five and under. I don't know if the numbers change every year. I think last year was like ninety eight thousand, provided any less than that. And they were over the age of sixty five, they could be on the enhanced star. And so obviously significantly less, but that'll give you some some ballpark, something like that, that impact is. In comparison to, go ahead, one more. In comparison to that, that's about one point one five percent is really what they go by as far as what your from your tax levy. That number, I take that with very insult, but that's basically what what that looks like. But more importantly, what that average share would be is about two hundred thousand dollars a year. Now, it's important that, and I say this more than we're gonna, it's so it's very similar to your, first of all, nursing district with four million dollars in pilots. So that's definitely maybe take, I've seen some downstate that seem to actually be pilots, four million dollars is substantial. But where I was going with this is you do, this is part of your overall budget, what you have to pay every year. You get state aid back, you get building aid back and you have principal and interest payments. And so this two hundred thousand dollars, to be transparent to people who go off and say it's going to cost you twelve dollars or it's going to cost you five dollars. But in reality, it becomes part of that's that's what you're coming up with every year in the budget, if that makes sense. And you might, you might come up with that a lot of different ways. Certainly can tax for it, but it's not like any other expense. It's like every other expense you have at that point in time. But that's your impact that's on it. So that's at twenty million dollars. Twenty million dollars certainly addresses probably a good seventy five percent of what your immediate needs over the next four to five years are. This scenario is really encompassing all of it, which is the twenty five million, which is one point nine. And you can see that it goes up about six dollars. So it's about eighteen dollars per one hundred thousand is the average. And I always say to people, put asterisks all around that in a hundred different ways because you won't be able to pull two property tax bills next to each other and buy eighteen dollars. It's really the average. It's impacted by utilization and everything else. And then that's the enhanced star below it. So those two scenarios, so what you're looking at in this case, the twenty five million is you would be addressing all of the OFA issues at that point in time. And then in a year, you have to wait three years. So in three years from that time, you'd be coming back into this building as well. You'd be addressing the issues I mentioned in this building as well. At OES, I think it's more of a planning situation. You have some parking lots that are going to need some, I'll call it some maintenance type items first. And then you do have some units in there. They might have some compressor work, things like that that we we, depending on the age of it, whether or not we'd be able to put it in a capital project or not. But I look at that, that those could be more and more maintenance items for you. What my concern is, is if you're budgeting maintenance dollars, maintain OFA, and then you're also having to maintain OES. You got kind of a double whammy on the maintenance side. So my thought is, at least in the next five years, you're looking at maintenance items at OES, addressing some compressors that might fail, some occasional issues that pop up. And your capital dollars are going to OFA and then over to here, the finish over here. If you were to just do the smaller amount, you're, like I said, it's going to be tough just based on the process of trying to do that. You could do one large project, but I don't know that you're going to get everything. You're not going to get casework in classrooms like you've been doing. You're not going to probably be able to get new floors. You might be able to get a lot of behind the scenes things. But we all know in this room that what you see right here is the finishes. There's a lot that went on behind these walls. There's millions of dollars. This whole project was a little over ten million dollars. With, I'm not going out on too far a limb to say about two and a half is what you're visibly seeing right now. The rest of it was your electrical upgrades, all the boiler pipes, the boiler itself, things like that, your parking lots. People see those, but you don't see the infrastructure, unfortunately. And this building, of course, has asbestos and had all different types of things that you would expect for a major building like this. So those are the four different scenarios. I know I went through them pretty quickly for you, but it gives you a range of, as you're talking about the budget and you're talking about ideas and where you want to go. On the short term, you could do ten million dollars if you go in May, you wouldn't have any local impact. We would prioritize. I mean, there's a reason I'm not being overly assertive with you. And what I would say or recommend you should do is it's really at this point direction, coming back the other direction. As soon as you lead us one way or the other, we will get started right away as far as what those specifically, those items are going to be. And what we would look at as for budget numbers, we'll get our construction, our project managers involved. If you lean towards a larger project, then of course we would be laying that out even tighter with Highland as far as with your architect as far as they're potentially be looking at doing. So anyway, it's a good conversation anyway for you to have. Any questions that jump out?
Your tax impacts were based on the current capital reserve that we have.
Yeah, so the one point, did you do one nine? More like one nine, obviously, yes. So it's not.
We were, based on the voter approval, we can fund that up to, is that still?
What's our, we have to actually think about that, the reserve itself. What is the maximum amount?
We got five million dollars.
It was five, but we're down now.
Right, we used some of it.
Did you use one, the one you're in right now is one five?
So you have right now, we're going to fund your capital reserve on three million, three hundred and twenty five thousand. After that, you'll need a new capital reserve.
So we have to go up for another budget to establish another capital reserve.
I mean, you actually make a solid point. You probably, you probably should do that anyways.
Right, I agree. I agree. Because it was good that we did the one we did.
Correct.
So what do we have, like three, three point two? A lot. That's that's how much we can fund it. How much do we have in there now?
One nine.
So if we were to fund that to the max, how would that impact? Would you maybe?
So so we'd have to rerun the numbers. We have one scenario on the twenty million that uses, I think, there was the fourteen million, that second one. They use two point nine. You could get to probably fourteen, fifteen million. I'd want Christine to confirm that. But one scenario that she ran for is if you had around three million in capital reserve, you could get to about fifteen.
So there's no way that we can, we have enough capital reserve to have a zero impact to the local?
Not at, not at the twenty.
If we go to twenty?
Yeah, probably not at the twenty, no.
Okay, but we could go as high as fourteen if we maxed out the capital reserve.
Now, if you went, if you didn't max out the capital reserve, obviously that impact at twenty or even twenty five drops significantly. You know, we'd have to run those numbers.
The debt service lasts for fifteen years. So if we were to put another proposal out for, to establish another capital reserve and fund it for another five. Because we talked about funding it for ten million, remember?
We did.
And we stayed at five. We, you know, so if we, we put a second one out there for five million, assuming it passed and assuming we, you know, we would continue, which are big assumptions, I realize. Because, you know, revenue, excess revenue has not been our main funding for surplus over in recent years, right? Cynthia, it's always been underspending the budget. So we're not, I mean, and if, you know, if you, we all remember where we were right before the, you know, the change in, you know, the presidency as far as what, you know, funding for education looked like and then all of a sudden it flip flopped. You know, that could go the other way. We don't know, right?
We don't know that. Based on the law, that's why it's, we're doing this right at the back of the long range projection. Because with the long range projection, I'm not sure we're going to be able to fund two point nine, three million dollars. I mean, that's going to be, part of that is, is how this plays out. So we can say that, but.
Right now, you only have, we're only projecting one point nine.
One point nine.
I'm, I'm not sure where you would get the other million.
Got this. I, I, I'm just playing it casually, throwing it out there. I realize that. I realize that.
Well, and then.
You could find a way to do that.
And if you could, then is that the best spot, the best spot for that million?
That's the other thing. What do you want to use the million for? So the board, ultimately, when, when you place money in reserves each year at the end of the year, June thirtieth, and based on how things work out projection wise, those decisions will have direct effects on this, so.
And where a lot of this is coming from and the reason to show you kind of a range from no impact to some impact is basically logistics of construction. So if you stay at the no impact, then what I would say to you is start loading up some of your maintenance budgets. Because you're going to run into an issue where your middle school, that middle school unit I'm talking about should be replaced, should be repaired right now. It has four, given I have four compressors and one is working, one is running. So we check it every day. We're able to check it and see it remotely. But that's, that is a large dollar repair. So that one concerns me. But when that unit comes up and it looks like a truck, a trailer coming up through it, it's enormous.
Yeah.
When the new one goes on, it's going onto a roof that is already beginning to leak and is already, so my fear is, is to place that unit down. Just the crane of that unit is about twenty five thousand. So you're going to come back. You can see my point. And that's, that's a decent look at that as we just aided that unit. We're not going to aid to take it back off the roof and now fix your roof and now it's that type of thing. So it becomes the sequences of it. You know, is there, is there room to wiggle? I'm sure. I just wanted to take.
And you prioritize that in the, in the different scenarios.
Yes, in the different scenarios. Yeah, as you move up the scenarios, you're getting away from bare bones. But if you do the, if you do the ten million, then what you've been looking at is, I would say, additional maintenance costs that you're looking at. I'm banking on if you were to go somewhere in the neighborhood at twenty, you know, where there is an impact, then you're going to have all your maintenance, not all of it, but you'll have lower maintenance costs than OES than you would if you just do capital.
Not to tell you how to build a budget, but I mean, there's ways to offset, I mean, if if the impact to the taxpayer was.
Two hundred thousand, yeah. College, or you're saying, okay, you're saying eighteen, eighteen.
Well, on average, you were just throwing out, I mean, however you want to look at it, you know, if we were to put your hands over here, Cynthia. If we were to appropriate more fund balance to offset the tax levy.
Right.
That could be one way to offset the impact to the taxpayer.
Yeah, how, that's exactly, you know, I haven't sat in the other seat too long, always looked at is what's really the impact? What's the amount every year that I'm going to need to come up with from the budget building side? If that's two hundred thousand, then if I have to tax for it, if you want to look at it that way, I'm taxing a portion.
I was thinking that especially, you know, the cost of some of these things, like you said, just twenty five grand just to pick it up off the roof and put it on the ground. You know, I mean, if you have to pay for that out of the budget, you know, it certainly makes more sense to get the aid on it, you know? And if you get the aid on it, then, you know, we're talking a lot less cost, net cost to the district. It would seem, you know, I mean, that's just one way to look at it. You take, you know, appropriate more fund balance and and do it. Because we all know this stuff you're talking about is going to need to be done.
Yes, yes.
By the way, this used to be a middle school. That's probably why they had the glass.
That's probably why they had the glass then.
Anyway, just a thought.
No, I think your, 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 so right, and that's its relationship to budget. And if the decision is not to go out at certain points in these scenarios, just understand what's going to happen on the maintenance side of the budget that we're going to have to account for. And that's why it's important to have the conversation and the discussion.
Yeah, I mean, if you, if you start paying this out of the budget, if you, if you were to have to do one of these repairs out of the budget and came up with a total cost as compared to what it would cost, net cost out of a capital project. It makes all sorts of sense to get creative with your, with your revenue side and make it happen.
You're getting eighty.
Eighty cents of the value.
Yeah, eighty eight cents of the dollar.
Capital, that's why the project makes sense.
One of your, one of your scenarios, I think it's the twenty nine dollar one, has an act, like each year you have about two hundred thousand dollars as your, go back one more. Yeah, go forward one. Yeah, it's about two hundred thousand dollars. So if you have a large unit coming out of the general fund, it's larger than that amount.
Exactly. That was exactly what the point he was trying to make.
But this is driving aid. So it it does make, it does make sense. On our end and with Dr. Farrell, the idea is we'll start to prioritize what we call like that, that phase of before you call for. Because you'll be calling for an election. If you stay on your may vote, you'll be doing it when you call for your budget election. So there's some work that's got to get laid out ahead of time. We're kind of working under the premise of what are those priorities, building off of the ones we have and putting, putting dollars to them. What we're, what we're doing with that estimate goes, we're looking out two years. And now looking at that, I think we'll change that a little bit, looking at that nineteen percent you have coming with. Or communication challenge, if you have anything.
I think the other thing to consider too is nothing typically goes down in cost.
No.
Everything in construction typically goes up. If we wait five years, seven years, the price of everything is just.
So the construction index has gotten better, but it is eleven to twelve percent a year right now.
If we look at what we had to exclude from the original project because the material costs went up so much higher. There's a good example right there.
So that is actually a great example, this building. I hadn't thought about that one. But you're, part of the reason some of that work didn't get done is you had a forty percent increase in raw materials. So that was, you might remember during COVID, the steel and your, and your concrete costs went right through the roof. So a lot of what was going to be block walls went back to metal studs and metal studs were expensive enough. We all know if you were a deck in your house during that period, what you paid for lumber. Well, that drove your casework prices right through the roof. So to give you an idea of your casework total in this building compared to a job that we're, we're finishing now, that's almost one and a half times the size of this casework, it's about the same price. And that's, and that, if you look at, that's three years later, it should be. So that's how inflated a lot of those costs were during the time. But at the same rate, like, you know, Dr. Farrell makes a good point, if things get more expensive, units are not going down. They keep saying that things are stabilizing, but I'll believe that when I, I see it. Units are still, some units are still twenty six to thirty weeks when you order them. So that's, that's part of your challenge, so. Anyway, any other questions? You know? We'll just keep plugging along with this. We'll need to be updated. And once we know, you know, we give you your budget again, we can obviously tweak it anymore.
And we have to, forty five, anyone know that goes out to public that are voting now, actually have that. So it's got to be quick in terms of time. We're going to have to make a decision fairly soon about the direction.
So whichever scenarios we decide upon will depend on what work is going to be scheduled then, is what you're saying in those items that you mentioned.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, and so you just kind of, that's kind of the bias. It was careful not to say here's all the things you can do and then those don't marry the money that you want to do for a prior standing point. We have considered your BCS, so I don't expect any issues with, say, pushing back. We're not, we're not ignoring the BCS. So the things that were identified as high priority are all in there.
I, I'm not going to speak for the whole board, but if we can design a scenario where the impact to the taxpayer on this is zero. If that makes everybody happy and we get all these things done and it's not going to. Can you try to look at some scenarios like that, Bob?
So you're what, so are you, what are your, what is the board's consideration for every year we keep doing this? So it's this year, the next year, it's the next year. Because we're still going to have, like, even if you do ten million.
Right.
You still have another ten to do. It's, it's not going to go away. So almost every May, am I wrong in that?
No, no, you're right. So we have to look at.
So look at it, spread it over time and elongate it, ten, 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 right?
I am working with the survey dollars, doing exactly that. They decided.
I guess that's what we need from you.
Cynthia, it's I am you because you always have to have a local share to fulfill that.
Green, green.
But we're not going to have any reserves to offset it. Once we get rid of the one point nine. So we need a proposal, what is needed, and we need some sort of.
Yep.
You can't, you can't do everything. You can't do the twenty five because you can't fund it enough, correct?
Well, maybe we can.
You can. You're going to have a local share.
Well, to June's point.
Oh, to do that? No.
Without impact, so that, the twenty five is off the table because we owe it enough on balance.
Correct. If you, if you did, just in the one scenario that was ran, if you put a lot more money, another million, which Cynthia mentioned, we're not sure where that would come from, in your capital reserve, you could go to fifteen million. Now, the other option would be, you know, if you went to ten million and you said, well, we know, we're not going to be able to get it all done. We'd vote again a year later. The challenge might be that capital reserve amount, getting that in there, you keep that low. But what you, you're not stuck doing, you're not stuck doing the whole ten million in one year. In other words, you could hold off some of that. There's some creativity that we can do with that as far as like when you're going to do some of these projects. But the reality is over, say, two and a half, three years, you would need that twenty to twenty five million.
So obviously, the roof and the.
Yeah, so.
Most of the prioritizing things that have to be done. Unfortunately, again, I'll say it again, you have a timeline on this other stuff that has to get done.
Most prioritizing things that have to be done, unfortunately, again, I'll say again, you have a timeline on this other stuff that has to get done, that has to be done, right?
Right.
So, I mean, if I were to see a priority list, and a timeline of things that must be done first.
Sure, yeah, and that exists, so that, that, for the sake of tonight, I wanted to talk more on the financial side of it, but there is a specific list with some budget dollars next to it, and say, this is what it would look like, so we can certainly.
So we can put all these scenarios together, bring them back to you, take a look at it.
Yeah, yeah, the, the dollars and cents to it have already, that's where, that's where those numbers came from, so we have that readily available, so.
Yeah, I can get that, I'm go, I'm trying to agree with what Gene said, and if we're trying to do something that's not gonna impact.
Yep.
Yeah, if we can find a way to fund it, you know, then I'm all for it, because it's got, you're gonna have to do it. You know, it's, you know, it's gonna, some of this stuff's gonna break, and then if you have to fix it out of the general fund budget.
Yeah.
It makes no sense to pay a hundred percent, a hundred, a hundred percent as opposed to twelve percent.
The only thing that I would share concern about is having, which is what might be brought up, is that, you know, having the reserve amount, capital moving forward, so if we do ten, try to look against ten again, if there's not one point nine in local money available, we can't do it.
Well, I, I.
We're gonna have to do the reserve itself, just to increase it, even having any to put it into, that's the other, so, a couple pieces of that.
That's the tricky part, we don't, we have, we could, if we had it, we could put another one point nine in the capital reserve, but we don't have it.
And the likelihood is we won't, based on how we're looking at the way foundation aid is moving forward, the way the state is making, that's, that's what we're seeing with the longer plan.
I get it.
So that's why I, I think the board, if you're saying no tax impact, that's fine, but that's a different constraint now moving forward, that we're gonna be.
I'm, I'm not saying no tax impact, I'm just saying there might be creative or more creative ways to fund it.
Okay.
That's all I'm saying.
Well, I, I think we, we'll go back to the drawing board, look at scenarios, numbers, prioritize things, and bring those back to you on, what's February twelfth is the next meeting.
Okay, that's what I would suggest, like, just so I'm on the same page, very similar to what we used to, the three columns, high priority, middle priority, little priority, we'll put, we'll do it by building, with, with budget numbers next to it, and then we'll do, we'll kinda do a two-year projection on costs, so we're gonna be high, but let's be safe high and safe low, and then bring that back, and then, from there to, to your point, then you might, all right, this might be a good item, but, yeah, so we can do that, that's not, that's actually done, it's just, I wanna get in the cleaned up version, easy to talk to, probably about.
That sounds good.
Okay, perfect, all right.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Yeah, good seeing y'all.
Um, right, we have four items, or four policies that are first read, so just ask everybody to read those over for, for next week.
Just so you're aware, the workplace violence, uh, policy, that is a, that's a new law that was passed recently, uh, it's on a pretty tight timeline for us, so that's why you're seeing this already on, we're already working behind the scenes to put together trainings and, uh, the other requirements that go along with it, so.
I think this would be a place.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
It is, it's pretty sure.
So, that's that, so moving on to section ten, uh, this is for our public comments, I just ask everyone to please limit your comments to ten minutes, and we'll start with Terry Ward.
I'm not sure I can stand up after all that. Okay, so, um, I'm gonna try to make it as quick as I can, I've been through a few administrative meetings regarding the book Gender Queer that's in the, in the school system. There's not the only book in our school of that type, okay, and I think that by keeping that book, oh, by the way, thank you for letting me know that you're gonna be talking about this in the next meeting, I appreciate that. I think that there's a few questions that the board needs to ask themselves. This book, putting this book and these types of books into our school system, um, brings forth a dangerous precedent. And where are we gonna draw the line? If we're allowing this, where does it stop? Because I don't know how many of you read that book, I've read it, and it's, it promotes some very unhealthy things for kids, it's, it's really a dangerous slippery slope. I think another thing that, um, you have to, um, you have to look at is where's your responsibility, you guys have, you are the first and last line of protection for every student in the, in these schools. If you don't protect them, who's going to? You know, you're the ones that make the guidelines, you're the ones that enforce the guidelines, you're the ones that develop policy and, and act upon policy. I have a lot of respect for what you do, and I know it's a hard job, I really do appreciate that, and I'll tell you what, I'm glad I didn't get elected, because I see the stuff that you guys have to go through, and what you're responsible for, and that's hard. Every time that I went before an administrative committee to discuss this book and to present my, my say on this, you know, a, a lot of you know I'm a Christian, and I pray a lot about what I say, and what I'm gonna prepare, and what have you, every single time, God was putting this scripture in my head, and I'm just gonna present it to you guys, it's, it's quick, I'm not gonna go through this. It's from Luke, chapter seventeen, verses one and two. Jesus said, "Things that cause people to stumble are bound to come, but woe to anyone through whom they come. It would be better for them to be thrown into the sea with a millstone tied around their neck than to cause one of these little ones to stumble." And I'll tell you, I can't think of anything more damaging to a kid than to rob them of their innocence. And that's what these books do, and I just, I hope and pray that each one of you has the courage to stand up against having these books in our schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Brett.
Greta? Hi, I'm Greta, and I just want to say real briefly, my son's in fifth grade here, and he's actually experienced the instructional coaches this year, and him and his classmates, I know, have already benefited, so I definitely appreciate that. As a parent, I just would have loved to get a, a preview of that, I don't, program, we didn't know it was taking place, I guess, and so it was a little awkward at open house, and I was asking Mrs. Neller what she was doing for the year, and then she had to explain it to me, and she did a great job. Um, but a heads up would have been nice, I definitely support it, and like I said, my son's already seen the benefit of that. My question is kind of ironic, after all this budget talk and whatnot, but I was at a parent group meeting here at AES this month, and just come to our attention, there's not really any kind of miscellaneous funds to support the teachers if things arise that are needed, like combs for binder, binder combs, or laminating sheets, things like that, that they're asking the parent group for, so my question in that meeting was, isn't there some kind of a miscellaneous funds for the teachers, whether it's at the building principal, like, level or higher up, that if this, a need arises, and we received info that it was just if it's not in the budget at the beginning of the year, they don't have any funds. So my question was like, I can't believe that's possible, because I just can't imagine how that would work, and I don't want the teachers to spend their own money, but I also don't wanna ask parents to do fund graders, to buy binder combs and things like that, so that was my question, I don't know if anyone has any current answers, or could.
We need to go get it, for sure.
Sure, okay, that was my main question, um, and concern, and what I wanted to present tonight, so.
We committed a couple of years ago now to, to take up, to, to cover the cost of, you know, students' materials and supplies, and if it's something certainly that they need, we'll certainly, you know, look at that.
Yes, that'd be great, so, because things do arise, it's hard for them to plan for the whole fiscal year of, of the cost, so, okay, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you. So, with that, I need a motion to adjourn.
Just for one thing.
Yeah, oh, I know, I know, I've got to do something else, but go ahead.
Well, you talk about driver's ed.
You go.
Just to re, just bring that back up again, I know, it might be on the old agenda or old business, but, um, a parent is asking again about driver's ed, and if we have a plan to perhaps offer that in the near future.
Yeah, I mean, we talked about it before, right, you know, I really think it's just gonna come down to, you know, some of these final budget decisions, if it's something we feel like we can add right now, based on the scenarios. But we've, we've talked about it for, you know, prior to COVID, and just, it just never has gotten to come to fruition, but I certainly think it's a, it's definitely a need, and a good thing for, for kids to, to be able to do that, one of the challenges, I think, sometimes is finding the instructor, um, because we, we kinda did some research on that, and, and so there's some, there's some restraints there, but, you know, certainly there's, I think there's probably options.
Is that a stipended historical position?
It depend, it depends on how you do it, if you run it as a, just a summer program, or if you run it during the school year, then it could be potentially someone that's, you know, that's part of their schedule of, of giving an offering even dur- during the school year for that, because we'd have to look at a couple different options of that.
Are there any subcontract, subcontracting options?
Yeah.
I was curious, I know that we.
There's some, uh, there's some out of Bangington, I don't know that there's any, that I know of that are, that are local, nearby us.
We hired a guy for my grandson and my granddaughter.
But we'd have, just to keep in mind, we know, we'd have to, obviously, we'd have to purchase the car, we'd have to equip the car, whatever type of vehicle, you know, it might be, you know, to meet the needs of, of those, those specs, so, but certainly something we can, we can take a look at.
Are there any other schools that are doing driver's ed?
There's some, yeah, there's some that are doing it, for sure, um, I think you, I could talk to you and Andy, kind of think that they're, they're doing it. They're doing it?
Yes.
Yeah, I could talk to Josh if I have it too, maybe there's something we can work together on.
I asked you to kick me if I forgot.
I was, I didn't wanna bruise you.
I told I bruise easy, so, anyway, I almost forgot to go around the room. Ken, you're listening for it.
Uh, yeah, sure, um, a couple things going on, uh, Mr. Schofield and I had, um, a group of our kids go to a competition, robotics competition, uh, John Heath and Steve Dingly took them there last week.
Yeah.
And, uh, they took first place across the board.
I believe this is year three, third time in a row that they.
The litter competition, John's doing an amazing job with the kids, so, um, keep up the good work, John and the crew. Um, our closing, clothing closet, uh, again, running from Key Club, and a couple of our classes is gonna be up and running completely by, we're hoping by February first, the building trades. Students were building some racks and, uh, putting the last bit of shelving in, so that should be up and running by February first, that impacts both the high school and the middle school. Um, we're hoping tomorrow, Phil's gonna be doing a regents, we are running our CBT simulations tomorrow, uh, in the middle school. Our sixth grade went to a VU basketball game, uh, last week, they had a ball there, and tomorrow our eighth graders are going to a career awareness event at SUNY Room.
Nice.
Thanks.
Go.
Uh, yeah, adding to that, um, again, with the clothing, dry, uh, for students, uh, one of the big ones, Bart Melby runs Key Club, um, she's already got a lot of donations for prom dresses for students, I know it's already crazy to think about getting to that point, um, but obviously having opportunities for our students, if they can't purchase prom dresses, they can't be prepared for fun events at the end of the year, so she's done a phenomenal job with that. And as Ken said, that'll be up and running shortly, yes, I'm keeping hope that everything goes good for regents tomorrow, we start, uh, our English regent starts in the morning, our whole junior class will be testing tomorrow morning, hopefully with no weather issues, um, so we've been getting ready for regents exams and getting students in.
Do you want me to call you Tom or Stacy?
How about Stacy? So, we have a fourth grade winter concert, um, on Wednesday, hoping fingers crossed that it'll go good. Our soar assembly, our next soar assembly, we'll hope we will recognize kids who are demonstrating assertiveness, being nice, or saying something that we need to say, um, is on Thursday, uh, we did both AES and OES, had our state test simulation, we're all doing computer-based testing, um, last week, and it went well. Uh, there were no real big glitches, a couple little things that we need to work out, but it was good for both students and teachers, I think, to see what was coming. And then a group of, a leadership team, our guiding coalition met last week, and we talked about the presentation from Dr. Louis Lusso, who spoke to, um, all of the local FOSI, or all of the FOSIs in New York State live, it was pretty cool, um, about the changes coming in the signs of reading. We're in a very good place, um, little tweaks to make, but not anything like totally different than what we're doing, so.
I wanna, for the, as, as far as the board, I wanna thank Mrs. Andrews and Mrs. Neller for your presentation. Lindsay, thank you very much, you know, music is close to my heart, you did a great job, so, and, and Justin, you stayed awake for the whole meeting, I, I appreciate that. So, with that, now I need a motion to adjourn. Got it, Mike, all in favor? Good night, everybody, thanks for.